Good morning. We have reached the 10 o'clock hour, and I will call this meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners May 2 to order. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and today that will be led by Deputy Chief District Attorney Doug Ritchie.
If you could please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for your information, we do have all five commissioners here. One's messing with the clock, and one is electronically visiting us because she's got ants. So, and there's a long joke that goes with that, so never mind. Anyway. Hey, we've got to do something. Anyway, the first order of business will be public comment. The Board of County Commissioners conducts the business of Douglas County and its citizens during its meetings. The Board may impose reasonable, content-neutral restrictions on public comments, such as comments that are on topics that are not within the jurisdiction, authority, or control of the Board of County Commissioners, or if the content of comment is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or accounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of other speakers. The presiding officer may order the removal of any person whose statement or conduct disrupts the orderly, efficient, or safe conduct of the meeting. Warning against disruptive comments or behavior may or may not be given prior to removal. Hand clapping, making remarks or gestures from the audience that may interrupt, interfere, or prevent any speaker from commenting should not occur. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, and we have a timing light up here. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds to complete, and when it turns red, we ask that you sit down. At this time, I will open public comment.
You know that my name is Jason Gibson. It's not Mr. Garrett. It's not Mr. Garrett Gibson. It's Jason Gibson. You will address me as such, and you will stop engaging in facets of identity theft and peonage or baratery. You know my name is Jason. I want you to call me by my name. Thank you, Mrs. Hales. Mr. Tarkanian, you've yet to correct your newsletter. I sent you checks for over two and a half years with my name. There's no reason why your newsletter should reflect anything other than Jason Gibson. Thank you. Now that we have that understood, this board thinks it's above the law. This board is constantly restricting our right to express ourselves, allowing special privileges for commissioners who use the Zoom utility to dial in from a distance, restricting that privilege and that right to those of us who need it the most, especially our constituents on the other side of the mountain range. It's unacceptable. We won't have it any longer. You're going to submit to the Nevada State Constitution just like we do. You're going to start respecting our rights. Your codes, statutes, and regulations take a backseat to the law of the land. It's called the Nevada Republic. It's called the United States Constitution. You're going to start paying more attention. Do you understand? Good. Silence is consent. Now, I'm here to remind you of what you should already know, and what you get paid top dollar to practice, but don't. When it comes to religious liberty, the United Constitution leaves us with a rather vague right to the free exercise of religion and freedom of speech. However, the Nevada Constitution goes much further in protecting liberty of conscience, consciousness, the free exercise and enjoyment of religious profession and worship without discrimination, including the right to peacefully assemble without being hassled and constantly shut down for speaking one's mind at the only public forum by which we can bring redress of grievances. You will respect the freedom and exercise of this religious profession and worship without discrimination or preference, and it shall forever be allowed in this state, Article 1, Section 4. Now, as you know, we are behind on our paperwork because they keep stacking us with false arrests and other distractions. But that Title 18, USC, conspiracy against rights applies to every board member here, and you've got my word that you're going to see that come to pass in that tort. Now, they replaced Earth Day and shut me down from speaking about. You're done.
You're done. Red is up.
So much for the 30 seconds.
You're done.
Robert Trumbly. Current, current member on the Airport Advisory Committee. And I just want to thank you guys for your patience and tolerance. The mood has descended. We'll bring it back up here. I just wanted to say a couple words in regards for Tim Gardner, who's applying for the Airport Advisor Committee, and I'd like to advocate for that. I hope you all choose him. He's a good choice. He's a great advocate for the airport. He works continuously, daily out there as an AMP, helping all of us keep our airplanes running, but also contributes in an academic way, dealing with the FAA. Right now, he's working to get our famous, world-famous wave window open, which we've lost a while back because of some hierarchy problems with the FAA and worries and stuff of Class A airspace. So, he's almost got that turned the corner for that. So, he's done a lot of work in his spare time, and us being able to get him full-time as an AAC member would be a big benefit. So, please consider him. I'd like to thank the other volunteers that are coming forward also. It's real important we have community effort out at the airport. A lot of people don't understand how important Municipal Airport is. We have a really good one, but we really don't know how good an airport is until we have problems, and that's when you really need a good airport, is when we have infrastructure problems. It becomes incredibly vital. Most people don't think about it, and we don't talk about that portion of it either. So, the importance of an airport is real important that you have it for the community and surrounding communities so people can come to your area conveniently and then spend their money, obviously, but the real need is when we have emergencies and stuff. So, we're working on trying to make this the best darn rural airport in Nevada, and I think we've made some big, some big moves forward on that in the last year, and we're going to keep chugging away at that. So, bring Tim in here for us and help us out. Thank you all for your patience and time and all your efforts.
If I, I would like to make it clear that when you come up for public comment, there are three lights involved. Green means go. Yellow means caution. 30 seconds to go, and red says stop and go back to your chair. Any problems? Questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It won't bite. Don't worry about it. Yes.
My name is Colleen Nestrel, and I've lived here for over 30 years, when this was just Fields, but not this building. But, um, living here in Nevada, it's been wonderful for me because I was one of those schoolteachers, and now I've retired. And I live next to Lampy Park, a fix-it home that we fixed up, and we decided to stay there after it got fixed up. But, living next to Lampy Park, I was asked today to come from Charla, and the things I've witnessed, I want to say thank you for putting in the cameras, because I didn't know living next to Lampy Park was going to be so hard. I dealt with the geese, and I've dealt with other things over the time. And I jotted down some notes, the vandalism in the Carson Valley days with the truckers coming in the backyard and having late-night parties and stuff after 10 o'clock has been kind of chaotic. No offense to truckers, though. They're nice guys. And then the tree removal, when the guys come out to do the trees, some of the trees that are dead and they're hollow inside, I'd like to see those cleaned up a little bit better if they can. The bear cans, we've had bears in our backyard, and the bears come in and they destroy the park, and then Brian and the other ranger guys have to clean up all the trash, which I'll go out and help them because I'm retired now, and that's no big deal. But it would be nice if we could get bear cans, because I didn't know the bears came down to the valley so much. And the cameras, I want to say thank you for the cameras. Oh, my gosh, because I am always constantly reporting about teenagers moving tables and spray paints and camping people that come in the middle of the night before the cop can catch them, and I didn't even know it because I'd go out walking early in the morning. And the dog laws, I went at the beginning, and there was no dogs when I lived there the past 15 years, and the dogs were, they got, they weren't there. And now we have dogs everywhere. And the animal, um, people out there, when I call in about the dogs, they didn't believe me about the dogs. So, they said, "Take pictures? Send them in." If you have so many dogs, I go, "Okay." So, I send them the dog pictures all day long. Not that I don't have nothing to do, because I'm usually at the center, okay? And if it's in your backyard and you fixed up your backyard, you get to see the baseball field and everything. And we fixed up the property. Everybody wants our property, but they can't have it now because I guess I'm in love with the backyard of Lampy Park. But, um, having the dog laws would be nice because some people make it a joke, and I did get attacked by a dog, and so did my dog, but luckily I'm fenced off. And I've asked people, "Why do you have your dog in the park?" And being polite, very polite, because I'm a Christian, and they make jokes and make fun of our society, and I don't like that. That's very nice, so. But anyway, if we can fix it.
Brett Tibbetts, Tahoe East Shore Alliance. I'm here to talk about destination stewardship, this plan. I guess they're going to participate by Zoom. I don't see them here. I had to drive down from the lake to be here.
Here.
Oh, I thought Devin was coming. I don't, I want to, I would like to ask, I have to agree with Jason. You guys are tough on the public. Fair enough. Be tough. But I wish you'd be as tough on other governments, entities. In my world, if somebody presented this and wanted to come and ask for money, I would say absolutely not. Come back with specifics. This is nothing full of, but full of platitudes. There are no specifics here, and I don't think it's fair. They want more money from you. We have a huge issue. Zephyr Shoals Beach last year was the joke of the world. We made worldwide news. They're not going to correct this. If you gave Dan Coverley and Scott Morgan 10% of what they're asking for, they would have Zephyr Shoals Beach cleared up. You say it's USFS land, but who are they going to call when it's a problem? They're going to call Dan Coverley. This is not a new process. This is the same old players that have been at this for years and have done nothing. They've presided over the ruinization of the lake. This is what they want to do. It's all platitudes. When they come up and give their presentation, please look at it. There's nothing here. And then, sorry. They say they want to secure their funding first, and then they're going to tell you what they're going to do. It's like Hillary Clinton and Obamacare. You have to pass the bill before we tell you what you do. That's travesty. And what are they going to do? They're going to maybe add more trash cans. They're going to pursue microtransit. That's it. They're not going to talk to you about real solutions like beach capacity. We need to be looking at beach capacity at the lake. Vehicle miles traveled, do you know what that is? The TRPA is in total violation of VMTs, and they're going to paper over it. That needs to be part of the solution. Zephyr Cove Resort should not be expanded. They're going to expand it. You need an advisory committee of residents from the lake. You have the Chamber of Commerce. There's no resident voice. I think most of you don't know the lake well. I know Chairman Rice does, but most of you don't. We really need more resident input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the Board. First order of business is approval of the agenda.
I have a question before we go to that.
Sir.
This is for our Chief Deputy District Attorney, Mr. Ritchie. It's my understanding that Nevada Revised Statutes has, for a long time now, provided for the means of commissioners to participate in meetings via electronic means. And before we had Zoom available, commissioners often participated when they were incapacitated or out of the area by, via cellphone, and were allowed to do that. It's my understanding that Nevada Revised Statutes now, because, and the only reason we went to Zoom was because of COVID, and we opened it up to the public so that they would still have an opportunity to participate in the meetings and public comment. Since that time, with, with the COVID being mitigated, we have retracted that back to just the commissioners being able to communicate and participate in a meeting via Zoom. To my understanding, there is no requirement to accommodate the public via Zoom or any other platform other than attendance directly in the meetings that is directed by Nevada Revised Statutes. Could we get some clarification on exactly? Those are my thoughts and understandings, but if I'm mistaken, if you could correct me, I'd appreciate it. But members of the public have often said that we, uh, they should be able to participate via Zoom, but there is, to my understanding, no requirement that we do that, only that we allow commissioners to participate in the meeting in that manner also, whether it be Zoom or other electronic means. Is that correct?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That's a very good question, Commissioner Gardner. Let me start by saying that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners fully complies with Nevada's open, Nevada's open meeting law. There has always been a provision for members of a public body, such as the Board of County Commissioners, to appear telephonically or remotely, or now, in the age of Zoom, electronically through Zoom or some other similar communication. The reason being is that the Nevada Legislature, who enacted Nevada's open meeting law, felt that it was important that the representatives of the people be able to participate in that meeting. Now, as far as individual members, Nevada's open meeting law requires that this body, the Board of County Commissioners, provide a physical location for people to come to share their views. This Board goes above and beyond. They, the meeting is streamed. However, you cannot provide comment, obviously, through YouTube. However, the Board does provide an opportunity for people to submit email comments, written comments, or other comments. What is not afforded to the public is an ability to kind of respond in the heat of the moment during the meeting to public, to things that might be going on. But, again, that kind of electronic participation is allowed to members of elected bodies because it's not just them. They represent a large group of people. They're representatives of the people. So, to answer your question shortly, because an attorney can never give a short answer, we can, we complete, this Board completely complies with Nevada's open meeting law and provides a physical location for members of the public to provide, in real time, public comment.
But I guess my, once again, my question was, we, we are not required by Nevada Revised Statutes to allow the public to participate in an electronic means to provide comment during the meetings. Is that?
Doug Ritchie, again, that's correct. The open meeting law does not require that the public be able to participate via electronic means.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Referring to page one of the, our agenda, public comment during the meeting, members of the public may attend the meeting in person and address the listed, listed at the top of the agenda to provide the public comment, but we also have a written public comment, but it restricts it to offer public comment before the meeting. In other words, you can't jump on this one and comment as we're moving along.
Sir.
Again, Doug Ritchie for the record. It is possible for someone who's watching, say, via YouTube, to submit written comment to the Board as it's going on, and it will be included as part of the official minutes record. I shouldn't say minutes. Be the official supporting material of the record. So, anyone who wanted to look at the Board minutes and all the supporting material would be able to see someone's comments that were made either at the meeting and mailed in, but obviously, the public here wouldn't be able to hear it, but it would be a part of the official record.
So, the word before should be stricken, then?
Yeah.
You agree?
Well, the, in the agenda, the reason we put in "before" is so that people know if they want the Board and the public to see this at this meeting, they need to get it to us before the meeting so it can be put in supporting materials so that both the members of the Board of County Commissioners and the public could read those comments today as those items are considered. Although someone's free to submit comments after the fact, based on comments that are occurring right now, the members of the public will not be, be able to enjoy those comments unless they happen to read the minutes afterwards.
Anything further before we get to the agenda? Okay. Well, it's not time for a lunch break yet, so let's, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any comment from the Board?
No.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Noah Sad will be the second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, and then we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have items A.
Mr. Chairman, we have to approve the previous minutes also.
You're right.
Okay. So, I will at this time move to approve the draft minutes of March 26, 27, 28, and 29 of 2024, special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners.
Do we have a second? Have you got that second? Okay. All those in favor. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
I do apologize, sir. I just want to clarify for the record that the minutes for the April 4 Board of County Commissioners meeting were included as part of the background materials for that particular agenda item, the approval of the minutes. However, they were not specifically listed in the agenda item for approval, so we will be bringing back the minutes for approval for the four, for the April 4 meeting to the May 16 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. All right. Now, now, now we can do the consent calendar. All right. We have items A through U. Does any member of the Board wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Saying none, I need a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Do I have a second? Any comments from the Board? And since this is for possible action, do I need to open this for public comment? I do not. In that case, I'm not. So, there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. All right. We will move on to the administrative agenda. And for item number one, for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of Proclamation 2024P-047, proclaiming the month of May 2024 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month in Douglas County, and I will be presenting the proclamation. And following that, we have another one for Lake Tahoe.
May I take your agenda?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the fun part of the job. Okay. We have two proclamations this morning. The first one is Proclamation 2024P-047, recognizes May of 2024 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. Whereas wildfires significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being, whereas residents can save precious time in evacuation by drafting a family evacuation plan and packing a go-bag ahead of time, whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home, inappropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition, and whereas residents need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to becoming fire-adapted. Therefore, we've got to get through the whereas before we can get to the therefore's, being proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to recognize the month of May 2024 as the Nevada Wildlife Awareness Month, and this year's banner theme is Plan, Prepare, and Take Action, as a means for education and a call for residents of Douglas County to work together for wildfire. Adapted this, adopted the second day of May 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Do we need to do Tahoe one, too?
We'll, we'll do that one right after yours.
Well, thank you for this. My name is, for the record, Megan K. I'm the outreach coordinator for the Living with Fire program, which is part of the university, managed by the University of Nevada Reno Extension. And I'm just going to do a little talking point, but first I want to introduce the folks that are, everyone that's here, from Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District. We have Chris Rowlett.
For the record, my name's Chris Rowlett. I'm a fire inspector with Tahoe Douglas, and we're happy to be here. We're grateful that the county commissioners do this adoption and proclamation. As we all know, wildfire is a significant risk to not only Tahoe, but Douglas County as a whole, so as we work together to, with Living with Fire to make the community safer, it's a win-win for everybody. the community safer, it's a win-win for everybody.
Yep, and then from East Fork Fire, we got Patrick.
For the record, Patrick Mooneyhan, East Fork Fire Protection District Captain Investigator. Let echo what Inspector Rowlett said. Also, as you know, we recently worked to adopt the Wildland Urban Interface Code in conjunction with county and East Fork Fire. That should bring a lot more of a fire-safe environment to lower Douglas County. And, you know, wildfire prevention is really a community-wide effort. It isn't just the fire districts that do it, it's in partnership with the commissions, the boards, and also the public and organizations like Living with Fire, which is an exceptional resource for those homeowners who are just now planning to do defensible space and other things around their property. Living with Fire is a resource that we often send them to, so.
And then the university extension systems, we're proud we have to have an office in every county, and so in our Douglas County office, we have our awesome Patricia Shill, the admin.
Thank you. Patricia Shilly from the Douglas County Extension Office, happy to be here.
So I'm, really quickly, just want to talk about some things that residents can do to prepare. So the Living with Fire program, we work in partnership with all of our local, state, and federal fire partners to develop resources for the community to help them prepare. This year's theme, Plan, Prepare, Take Action. We really wanted to get down to the nitty-gritty. So to prepare for wildfire and to live more safely with wildfire, you need to create a plan for yourself, for your family, what are you going to do during evacuation, but also on the community level. So thinking about how you're going to evacuate your community, how many ways do you have in and out. So we think it's really important to connect with your neighbors, to encourage community projects. There's a lot of resources out there right now for community-wide fuels mitigation, so we recommend that folks look into that. You can reach out to us, to your local fire district. We can get you to the right people. We are offering a challenge to the community. It's the Declutter Your Gutter Challenge in May. So you know that those leaves have dropped and everyone's gutters are probably full of leaves. That's one of the hotspots on your home that is really vulnerable to fire if a wildfire happens. When you have vegetation accumulation around your house, especially on your gutter, embers can get in there and cause real problems. So we want to challenge folks to declutter your gutter, take a photo, send it to us, and you could get a free Yeti tumbler mug, which is really great. I can't have one because we purchased it for the challenge, but I wish I could. And we also want to emphasize that in addition to preparing your vegetation, it's really important to look at the structure itself. In addition to the gutter, there's also hotspots around the house that are really vulnerable to the ember attack, vents. So if you have, if you're able to, cover those vents with a one-eighth inch mesh. Prepare yourself, your family, for evacuation, pack that go-bag, but also talk about what an evacuation could be like. It could be especially kind of scary for the little ones, so make sure that you guys are talking about that before the actual event. Prepare. And yeah, if you have any more questions, check out livingwithfire.com or reach out to your local fire protection district, and we can get you some educational resources. Ready to do the Tahoe one?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Gosh, I can remember when I, I mean, believe it or not, it's been a long time, but when I was in elementary school, back in the other century, and I, and when my children were in school, I remember them actually doing a coloring book and developing an evacuation plan by the family, and they took it home and they asked us, you know, do we have a family evacuation plan in the case of a fire? Do you know if the schools or yourselves are still doing that activity?
I know that there are, there are lots of organizations, great ones, that work around, like American Red Cross has a great activity like that. We're actually in the process of developing a whole children's activity book that will include an activity like that. So as far as like a Living with Fire activity, look for it in 2025. We noticed that there is a gap in our outreach to kids and youth, so we're, we've done a lot of work to address that. We're doing, we developed a wildfire science curriculum for high schools, and then we're kind of adapting that to the lower levels as well. But yeah, tomorrow, I'm actually going out to Fallon, to the Churchill County Library, to do a presentation for kids, where we're going to talk about evacuation preparedness. So we're going to do like a little activity, talk to them about things that they can pack in their go-bag. Because kids, you're thinking more about what's going to soothe you, keep you calm, you know, because evacuations can be stressful. So something not just for your physical health but for your mental health as well. So we're talking about that a lot. But it's a good question.
I think we all know as adults, you know, how to react to that, but, but, you know, until we get the instigation from our kids coming home from school, saying, I need to do this, this is a homework assignment, you know, and what are we doing, you know, then it reminds you that it's an important aspect. Yeah.
You are spot on. Yeah, that's something that we do a lot, most of our outreach is to homeowners and adults, and a lot of times they're like, okay, yeah, 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 I know I got to do it. It's like 10th on my priority list. But when the kid, yeah, when your kid comes home and is like, hey, this is important, let's do this, then they pay a little more attention, so. If you guys are up for it too, we do have a banner like we do every year, so if you wouldn't mind getting a photo.
Okay, for the record, for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation 2024 P dash 048 designated May through October 24 as Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Month. And the chief and Michelle Turner are not here, but as we've already been introduced, let me read the proclamation to you. Yours is even longer. Stand by, folks, for the whereas. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Lake Tahoe's environment, economic, and social well-being, whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition, whereas residents need to work together to prepare their homes and neighborhoods to survive wildfire and commit to becoming fire-adapted, and whereas residents should also recognize their role in preventing wildfires by following local fire restrictions during fire season. Residents should work towards becoming a fire-adapted community by creating defensible space, hardening homes, and supporting vital fuel reduction projects. Fuel reduction projects reduce wildfire impacts, allow for safer firefighter access, and can provide ecosystem benefits such as improved wildlife habitat and forests more resistant to drought, insects, and diseases. Fire prevention is everyone's responsibility. Therefore, be proclaimed by Douglas County Board of County Commissioners that May through October 2024 is the Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Campaign in Douglas County, Nevada, and this year's banner theme is Get Defensive as a means for education and a call for residents of Douglas County to work together and be ready for wildfire. Adapted the second day of May 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners, and thank you. And for the record, just this week, we had a meeting at Lake Tahoe at Cale Community to talk about evacuations and how to be prepared for that in the future. And no, we're not reducing the lanes to two lanes on Highway 50. That's a done deal. Anyway, thank you very much. We appreciate what you do.
The Tahoe banner is different. How about we could just get a photo for the Tahoe?
Okay.
Is this the Tahoe banner?
No, the Tahoe banner.
Okay.
Get in here.
Oh, here it is. Oh, yeah, good call. Yay, there you go. Yeah, do you mind? That's our annual photo op. We got to get it.
Stewardship Plan, including the state of tourism and issues that Lake Tahoe is facing due to tourism. The presentation will outline the vision of the stewardship plan, development process, and what the future looks like as the plan is implemented. Nikki Rüdelbach, Natalie Perdue, and Devin Middlebrook.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Nikki Rüdelbach, for the record. I am going to introduce ladies, if you want to come on up, Nettie Pardue and Amy Berry. Devin Middlebrook can't make it today, he's not feeling well. So another member of the stewardship council will be here, Amy Berry, to help Nettie with the presentation. And here they are.
Good morning. I'm Amy Berry, CEO of the Tahoe Fund. Thank you so much for having us today. We're excited to be here, tell you a little bit about the Destination Stewardship Plan, maybe clear up some miscommunication or some misunderstandings around the plan, and really show you that this is not just a plan. This is a plan to see real change affected in Tahoe. And I'm happy to be joined here with our managing director, Nettie Pardue. So just to set the stage, I think it's helpful to start with some recreation trends that are happening around Tahoe. You can go to the next, oh, I'll take it. Thank you. So in Lake Tahoe, we experience a $4.5 billion tourism-based economy, direct spend, over $10 billion if you start to add in total economic impact. We see about 2 million unique visitors a year. That's 17 million visitor days, so individually 2 million people, but they come back so often, we get up to 17 million visitor days. And so there's definitely a growing population in the area nearby. 26% to 28% nearby population growth expected over the next 20 years. So that's Reno, that's Douglas County, that's the Bay Area and Sacramento as well. And so a few other kind of trends that are going on in the Tahoe Basin before we really dive into the plan, which is a lot of the tourism-based organizations, like Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority and North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, are shifting from a marketing message to a managing message. I think what they've learned is, there's a lot of people in Tahoe, maybe our money isn't best spent driving more people to Tahoe when they're already here, but doing a better job managing people that are there. So there's this intentional shift underway from marketing to managing. COVID-19 really changed everything, I think, in the country, in the world, but especially in Tahoe. We saw a shift in visitation, a lot of remote work, so a lot more second homeowners spending a lot more time at their homes in Lake Tahoe. Supply chains were impacted, and we're still trying to figure out what's here to stay and what's not. In July of 2019, or I'm sorry, July of 2020, the trail markers at a certain trail in Tahoe were higher than they were in July 2019. So the world was shut down in July 2020, and people fled outside, and they fled to Lake Tahoe because they could. And at the same time, everybody knows we're facing rising inflation, high inflation rates, our economy isn't as strong as it has been in the past, extreme weather trends, which are really having an impact on visitation. Small businesses especially are impacted by, we need snow to operate ski resorts, but then it comes too much and too heavy on the weekends, they shut the highways down, no one can come. You all remember the Caldor Fire coming in, we had to evacuate the entire southern part of the basin, all the businesses shut down, smoke impacts from nearby wildfires as well. So there's a lot going on that makes it a little bit complicated to operate in Tahoe from a recreation standpoint. But what we did see in 2020 with COVID was, I'll just zap you.
Can I ask questions, or do you want to save those to the end?
What do you think? Yeah, let's save them to the end. That would be great. So as I said, COVID really shone a light on some of the issues that Tahoe's been feeling for a long time, which is just the pressures of everybody wanting to come to Tahoe. We don't have gates up, we can't keep people out, and it's actually good for people to go outside. It's good for their physical health, it's good for their mental health. But we have to get, we have to find a way to better manage this visitation, and that really exploded during COVID. When people's anxiety levels were highest and people were flooding outside, you couldn't go to your local playground, you couldn't go to the mall, you couldn't go to Disneyland, but guess where you could go? Lake Tahoe. And so people did. And we saw trash show up on beaches, voters put us on the do-not-travel list, and then we saw locals picketing saying, do not come to Tahoe. So it was a bit of a mess. And what was happening in the background was all the land managers, law enforcement, the marketing agencies, were really trying to figure out, how do we manage a situation where regulations are changing on an hourly basis? And we have to remind you, the feds own 80% of the land, we have two states, we have five counties, we have a city, and it seemed like every day, every county had a different COVID rule. And so very organically, these calls started happening, where everybody would get on the call once a week to kind of say, well, what are you doing? How are you managing this? And it led to this incredible collaboration of people really trying to solve problems together. Because say you manage a state park, say you manage San Harbor State Park, you've never managed in a global pandemic before, you don't know how to manage these challenges. Well, the guys at state parks on the other side in California are having the exact same issues. So everybody really came together trying to understand, what can we do about this? We made it through the summer of 2020, it was pretty chaotic, and then we took a moment to really say, what do we learn from this? Let's get everybody back together and really start to talk about, what can we do to change things? Because the definition of insanity is doing things the same way and expecting different results, and no one wanted those same results. Everybody was feeling the pressure from land managers to businesses to homeowners. And so we began what we now call Destination Stewardship Planning, and this had actually begun all the way back in 2018, 2019. We had created something called Sustainable Recreation Working Group under the TRPA's EIP program. Then COVID hit, that group came together to start the reaction and response. We then held a workshop in 2021 to really understand what we were going to do, and that led to the start of the Destination Stewardship Plan process. And for the first time ever, we set a new table of partners, and you can go to the next slide. So for years, there was a really strong environmental group, oh, did we miss one? Oh, yep, there we go. For years, there was a really strong group of environmental organizations that got together, and at the same time, there was a really strong group of business organizations that got together, but rarely did they ever get together together. And so it was almost like we ran Lake Tahoe as a big giant resort, where sales and marketing never got to talk to operations. And for this to be successful, we realized that we needed a shared vision for what tourism and outdoor recreation meant for everybody in Tahoe, for the locals, the businesses, the environment, the environmental managers. So a very unique group came together to help us plan what this future was going to look like and what the shared vision would be. And so we started with feedback, with public engagement. So we did over 1,000 surveys to the residents, over 2,300 surveys to visitors, we did 30 one-on-one interviews with leaders and stakeholders in the community, 15 different discussion groups with over 200 participants. Each discussion group was targeted to a different stakeholder group, so we had the casinos in one group, we had outdoor recreation providers in another group, we had schools in a group, healthcare providers in a group. We held nine different public workshops all around the basin, because really what we wanted to do was make sure we heard from the public, the people who live and work in Tahoe, what do you want for Lake Tahoe's future to look like? So everything that we did was absolutely rooted in this public engagement. And then I think what's really interesting is what we found from this public engagement, and one is resident survey. So 4.5 out of 5 quality of life rating. That's pretty much off the charts. It's hard to find another area where people love living where they do, like Tahoe. However, what we saw is that very few are seeing how tourism contributes to their quality of life. So only 21% of residents agree tourism-recreation support quality of life and a strong sense of community. So that is a big headline. That is an issue. And that was really one of our guiding stars as we were putting the plan together, is how do we change this? Because we want people to enjoy where they live and also appreciate that they're able to live in this place. and also appreciate that they're able to live in this place, because there's a $5 billion economy that supports the livelihood of many. So how do we make these things work together? Next slide. And then from the visitors, 88% indicate a destination supportive environmental stewardship is at least somewhat important to their choice of destination. 82% say they do their part to keep a destination clean when they visit. And 42% said the Tahoe region is doing an excellent job of safeguarding its natural resources. So I just want to point out the 82%. I don't know how many of you have heard of the 80/20 rule. Where often it's 80% of the issues come from 20% of the people. The data is showing us right there. You know, so it's very likely that the 18% of the people that aren't doing their part are causing 100% of the issues that we start to see that show up in the media and other places. So.
I guess that's what would trouble me, is that 18% that says they're not doing their job, you know? And that's the ones we have to control, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
And I know you didn't want to take questions at the beginning, but to a follow-
That wasn't a question.
But to a follow-up to that, 18% of 2 million visitors is quite a large number. And it's even more of a large number when you count 17 million visitors a day. That's quite astronomical. That's something that should be addressed.
Absolutely. And I'm going to turn it over to Nettie now, because Nettie is going to take you through the actual plan. And it was really important as this group came together was that Tahoe is very good. I think everywhere is very good. Spending a lot of time and building a plan, putting it in a shiny notebook and putting it on a shelf. And there was a commitment from everyone involved in this, that that was not what we wanted. We wanted a plan with real action steps. So our first action was hiring Nettie as our Managing Director to make sure that this coordination of so many different partners kept moving forward. So I'll have Nettie take you through the plan and then very distinct actions that are happening already. This is kind of working.
All right. Good morning. Hello, Commissioners and attendees. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Nettie Perdue, and I'm the Managing Director, as Amy said, of the Destination Stewardship Council. My role is to manage and advance the implementation of the goals of the Destination Stewardship Plan. So for me, it's really important being in my role that this isn't just a plan. I heard from people as I stepped in the role, we don't want another plan for Tahoe. So my job is to drive this plan forward and hurt all the people who are a part of this. As Amy said, we brought all these unique partners together. And this is the first time we're creating a new table for people across the basin. And that includes five counties, two states, and the Washoe Tribe moving this forward.
Can you speak into the mic, please, for the audio?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. We'll go to the next slide. So that was the cover that you just saw of the plan. And you can currently download that plan on our website that I'll show at the end. And there's a, it's a 130-page document, but there's a nice 12-page summary, executive summary. And again, I'll put that up towards the end. So this is the vision of the plan. And at the core of the Destination Stewardship Plan is a shared vision for Tahoe, which you see is a cherished place, welcoming to all, where people, communities, and nature benefit from a thriving tourism and recreation economy. This is the first time we have a shared vision across the basin. And when I say I want to underscore "across the basin", we have a shared vision for recreation, stewardship, and the economy. There are four pillars, as you can see, that make up the vision. The first pillar is responsible for creating the governance structure, and that's in the far, far right-hand corner. And that's how we're going to drive this plan forward. The second pillar is responsible for creating, fostering the tourism economy. Improve the Tahoe experience for all is the operational pillar, followed by creating a culture of caring for the land and stewardship. So, next slide. So how do we do this? We're going to turn this plan into reality, like I said. So the first piece, turning the shared vision into action, is the governance structure. So we've established this council. This council meets once a month, and it includes all those members that you saw on that previous slide. We've since added a few members. One of those is the League to Save Lake Tahoe. They're our newest member. We are building the council's capacity, which includes hiring of my position. We've secured funding and other resources. And we're establishing action teams and work plans. And we'll go through that in the next slide. And we're developing and deploying a communication strategy. Our first newsletter about our actions around the summer will be going out in early June. Go to the next slide, please. So this is what our council and action team structure looks like. At the top, you can see the council, which includes all the members, again, on that previous slide, who helped put the council together, or the plan together. And then subsequently, we're meeting around it. We have an executive council. Under that council is my position as Managing Director. We have a comms and messaging committee. That committee actually started about two years ago, around the time of COVID, when a group of BIOs from around the basin were getting together to talk about their strategies around managing the challenges they were facing. So subsequently, that group has turned into supporting the comms and messaging of the Destination Stewardship Plan. As you can see, here are the other pillars that we talked about. Fostering a tourism economy that works, creating a culture of care for Lake Tahoe, and improving the Tahoe experience for all. And beneath those, you can see we have, we actually have four action teams. Here it says five. The waste management one on the far right-hand corner, we are, we're potentially going to, we will have that as a litter subcommittee, but it's likely going to go underneath a couple of the other action teams. We recognize that waste management litter is a huge issue, and we want to make sure that we have it properly structured. So we actually have four action teams. So these action teams are meeting on a regular basis and coming up with work plans and how we can make changes across the basin. One of the things that we're doing is we have, we've gotten everyone together on how do we manage 4th of July? And looking at, we're talking to law enforcement, talking to the local land managers. How do we target those beaches that, you know, such have been suggested? Zephyr Shoals, Regan and Conley, Kings Beach in the basin that have had issues in the past. But how can we increase our operational support? Dumpsters, porta-potties, and improve messaging to support a better run 4th of July day and week in Tahoe this year? We'll go to the next slide. So here's some actions that you can see. The bottom corner represents the recreation infrastructure that we're hoping to approve. Some of the things we're talking about is coordinating across the basin, the current EIP projects that are going on. We're talking about such things as perhaps reopening on a very, very limited basis the Myers Highway 50 Visitor Center that was shut down many years ago. You can see transportation. You can see stewardship with the Take Care Tahoe. And in the upper right-hand corner, litter management. So really, truly, this is, we hope, and our best intentions are that this is a plan about action. This is not just a plan that sits on the shelf. So locals and visitors can see a difference through this plan. Go to the next slide. And this is our shared funding partners, those individuals and mostly organizations, all organizations who have contributed. And you can see most of the individuals who are part of the plan have contributed towards the funding here. And with our funding, you know, some will go towards, you know, operations, but there's also funding that will be directed towards the needs that the action teams identify. So again, looking at 4th of July as an example, there have been some areas that we've identified that we might need up to 20 to 30 additional porta-potties so they can come back to the Destination Stewardship Council and request funds for that. So just to reiterate, we are not here also to, this is not a funding ask for you all today. This is an informational meeting to let you, presentation, to let you all know what the Destination Stewardship Plan and council is up to. We think it's, the more we can communicate about our goals and intentions, the more I think we can make a difference across the basin. Next slide. So here's the website. I encourage you to visit the website and our email if you need to contact us. And thank you for the opportunity to present today, and we look forward to hearing your questions.
Thank you for the presentation, and now it's time for questions.
My turn?
Go ahead.
The bullet about shifting from marketing to managing, I'd like just a little bit more information about that. It seems that, I think the bullets, or in your narrative, you mentioned various organizations. I just wondered, you said that was intentional. What could you tell me more about that? Or how you coordinate with entities to be intentional about that?
Hi, Amy Berry, for the record. You know, it would be better if they were here to speak to that themselves. But what I can tell you is, we have, as everybody knows, we have shoulder seasons in Lake Tahoe. So we have incredibly busy winters, and we have incredibly busy summers, and we have shoulder seasons in the spring and fall. That's why the new wonderful Tahoe Blue Event Center was created to help relieve some of that gap in the shoulder seasons. And I think that's the strategy, is when people are already coming to Tahoe, there isn't a need to spend money trying to drive more people to Tahoe. They're already here. There's an effort underway to change messaging tactics to tell people how to behave more responsibly when they're in Tahoe. There is still very much an effort to drive visitation in the off-peak seasons and to drive convention business and people who are going to fly by airplane because they tend to spend longer here, they have less of an impact, they have a better economic return on investment as well. So it's, I shouldn't say they're entirely turning off the marketing spigot. That would be incorrect if I said that. But I think they're being more intentional about what time of year they're marketing and who they're marketing to.
Are they, are they sending out any managing messages?
Yes, absolutely. I can, I know the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority has a new campaign out, the pledge to the mountains, the pledge to Tahoe. And so they're encouraging people, when you come up here, here are the things that you should know when you're recreating in such a natural, pristine environment. So messages like, "We have the best tasting. Drink tap water in the world. Please drink Tahoe tap. Don't bring cases of plastic water bottles up. We live in an area with bears, so please be bear-prepared. Don't feed the bears." Wildfire awareness, you know, don't spark the fire that starts a wildfire. Aquatic invasive species, make sure if you bring your boat up, you know, you have to be clean, drain, and dry. And really, from a litter standpoint, it's the leave no trace, you know? Pack in whatever you, or I'm sorry, pack out whatever you pack in.
I'm just wondering if you, with all those agencies involved, do you coordinate consistency of message?
Yes, absolutely. And one of the pillars you saw under there was the Working Group for Building a Culture of Caretaking in Lake Tahoe. And there is an effort underway. There's been a Take Care Tahoe campaign for the last 10 years with about 30 different partners engaged, trying to create one cohesive message. With this new Destination Stewardship Plan and council, there's just more partners at the table. So we're looking at updating Take Care, we call it Take Care 2.0, to really help develop a stronger, more cohesive message to really get to the visitors and the residents that they know they have a responsibility to not just take care of Tahoe, but probably leave it better than they owned it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair.
Other members of the board. Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I think we're seeing that as a general theme across, across actually the visitors and certainly the tourist destinations across the nation are more, are, have evolved over the last several years into managing destinations versus trying to continually drive tourism into their, into their communities. And I know that that's a, that's a conundrum that we face. And I know that's a conundrum that we face here on the Valley floor as well, with our Visitors Authority. And balancing the process, or the thought process, of our residents and helping them understand that tourism drives so much, so much of our economy. But we don't want it to infringe upon the quality of life of our residents, not only at Lake Tahoe, but here on the Valley floor as well. But I think all tourist destinations throughout the United States are experiencing this problem. How do we wrestle with this, with this balancing act of, of how much do we pour into tourism, dollar-wise, to attract visitors at the same point in time over attracting visitors to affecting the, to a negative quality of life of our residents? So it's a conundrum that everybody is facing in tourist destinations. And of course, Douglas County is a huge tourist destination, regardless of whether or not it's on the, up in the Tahoe Basin or here on the Valley floor. So anyways, just some comments, that's all.
Can I comment on that, Commissioner? So recently, one of the values of my role is that I'm getting to also talk to other destinations, just like you're saying. And this is not a unique problem to Tahoe, right? It's all destinations, they're having an increase in recreation. So they can learn from some of the wonder, other destinations can learn from some of the things that we're doing in Tahoe. And then we can also learn from other destinations and sharing best practices. So there's a real value in sharing, sharing our practices.
I'm just, and I think Commissioner Hale's alluded to it, if I'm not mistaken, in that we already have so many other organizations that are doing the same thing. And that's, you know, and now we see an additional organization coming into place that's going to be displaying the same message. And so I'm just wondering, how many more organizations are we going to have developing that are going to be trying to, to display and articulate the same message and looking for those funds in order to run and drive their organizations that it's going to become a financial impossibility to fund all the organizations that are trying to do what you're trying to do? So that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, Amy Berry, for the record. I mean, I think what we're trying to do is actually lessen that load. Is that what we have seen is, I used to work in advertising back in the day in New York City, and the CEO of this, of the agency would sit across from like a Fortune 50 CEO, and she would take out a bucket of little tennis balls, and she would throw them all at the CEO across the table, and they couldn't catch them all. And she would say, "This is what you're doing with your messaging." And then she would take out one big giant ball, throw it, and they would always catch it. And she would say, "If we could get your messaging distilled down to this one big ball, people will catch it." And that is really the metaphor for what we're trying to do under Destination Stewardship, is rather than every single organization trying to take on this messaging challenge is to bring them all together under one umbrella so we create one big giant ball for Tahoe that we can pass around, that people will get the message really clearly. And hopefully, through that, we're actually reducing the amount of resources needed. So you wouldn't need to create your own messaging, then also contribute to the Destination Stewardship messaging, that it would all be collectively pooled, the same funds. And we should be saving each organization money in the end. That's the goal.
If I may?
Please.
I do share the concerns Commissioner Gardner articulated and the consistency of message. And what you described with the balls is exactly what I had in mind. If the messaging is cohesive, if it shares the same, the same look, the same, if it's consistent, a consistent message is going to be way, way better than scattered. The more repetition someone has with the same message, the same look, the same intent, the same objective, you know, the more impactful it will be. And I do worry about this, when you say intentional shift among the entities toward managing, not just marketing, that it needs to be more cohesive. And it sounds to me like you're working to that end. So just a comment, but thank you.
Yeah. No, I thank you for that. And this is why we want to do these presentations, to collect this feedback and make sure it's informing the work that we're doing. And I will say, it's very much in line with what we heard from the workshops as well. The community said, "Just one big campaign that everyone can follow along to." So those are our marching orders that we're working towards.
Hi.
And I would think, to the extent that you are taking some of the burden from those entities, and I know some of them are well-funded, that I would think that you should be funded because they don't have to give that message anymore. You're doing it. So they can shift that resource from themselves to you.
That's the goal.
Commissioner Tarkanyi.
Hi, I just got a few comments, a few questions. One of the biggest wastes in government is when you overlap responsibilities and you have multiple agencies doing this, some type of overlap, maybe not entirely the same thing. And this is one of the concerns that our fellow Commissioners has mentioned here. But I want to ask you a few questions, just dealing with Douglas County, because we represent Douglas County. Douglas County is not a part of your, this organization. I'm talking about the county itself, the government, not the Chamber of Commerce.
Not yet.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a part of this very large group. And the group includes Washoe County, Eldorado County, County of Placer, City of South Lake Tahoe. So you have all these groups in here, they're going to make a decision that's going to influence Douglas County. And you're going to come to Douglas County and ask for money.
We're not actually asking for money. We're actually asking for your-
You said, "Not yet." Not yet. Okay, now listen, I don't mean to be argumentative. First of all, I want, I want to say beforehand, I think it's wonderful what you guys are trying to do. There's a lot of issues in Lake Tahoe. They need to be addressed if you want to have a prosperous future where everybody can enjoy it. So I really appreciate what you're doing. But my concern is this. Douglas County has in the past, since I've been on the board at least, given much, much more than its fair share of expenses in these type of areas. You mentioned how the event center has diversified the timing of tourism, where they're coming in on the off- in on the off-seasons. Well, Douglas County's paid for all that. We didn't get any money from any of those others. So then we create a micro-transit system, and Douglas County's paying far more than any other jurisdiction, and we get less service. Now we're going to have a new organization, even if Douglas County is a part of it, you have all these other groups that are paying a lot less, and all these are the different things you're worrying about, and they're going to come to us and try to get more money from us. And, and I just gotta, I gotta tell you, I, I want to take care of Douglas County, that's what I was elected for, I'd love to see what your purposes are to be accomplished at Lake Tahoe, but Douglas County's got to have a big say in where, what happens if they're going to put money in there. Okay, just one, a couple of quick things. Who deter, first of all, I, I mentioned this before, it's astounding, 18% of the people don't think that they do their part to clean up where they go. How sad is that? It doesn't surprise me today's environment, but 540,000 annual people come to Lake Tahoe, and they don't believe they're doing what they should to keep it clean. That's 3,060,000 days of tourism. The people are there not doing their part. That's, that's what, if you really want to help the problems of Douglas County is you get rid of those people however you can figure out. All right. Final thing is this, who determines sustainability? Sustainable?
Yeah.
See, I've heard, I've heard that comment by other organizations, and everybody wants to have sustainable tourism, sustainable growth, sustainable, who makes that determination?
Let me, let me take a, a crack, and Nettie can hop in, but first, we are not here to ask for Douglas County's money, we're here to ask for Douglas County's participation because to us, you're missing at the table, and we very much like to have you at the table. In terms of sustainability, I mean, what we're really searching for is a balance so that we take care of the economy, we take care of the community, and we take care of the environment at the same time. And sustainable is, tourism has traditionally been a reductive, extractive?
Extractive.
Extractive industry, where we're taking from the land to give people an experience. And I think what we heard loud and clear from the community, and how many of us feel who work in this space, is that is not a sustainable solution, there's only so much you can take before you have nothing else to give. And so I think what we're looking at, our solutions, when we, at least in my mind, when we say sustainable, it's about the balance that Commissioner Gardner, Gardner was saying, it's how do we make sure we're balancing all three elements, that we're taking care of the environment, but we're not taking care of the environment in such a stringent way that we're not allowing the tourism economy to prosper? But at the same time, how do we take care of the local community? Because they're the people who choose to live here, they're the taxpayers, so.
See, but that's the, the problem is, you haven't said what sustainability is, and who's going to, who's going to make that determination? Is it just going to be this board, these board members, which are made up primarily of non-elected officials? The only people that are held accountable for something that happens to the public are the elected officials. And I bring this up because in your survey, you had 1,100 residents you talked to, but you had 2,200, if I have the numbers right, tourists. You have twice as many tourists are going to be part of this survey than the residents that live there. And then you're going to have a majority of groups that aren't elected make determinations for this. And we've had big battles about the economic needs of the lake compared to the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of the homeowners, mostly in the vacation home rental business. So there's arguments of, hey, the money needs to be there, so let's have this even if it hurts the neighborhoods. And there's a split between us on the board, so we can't even make up our mind what is appropriate or sustainable. So I guess my concern is with your organization, with so many diverse groups, how is that sustainable definition going to be applied? That, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the, it's, it's a commitment to creating that balance between the economy, the environment, and the local community. And I think the local community will let us know if we're missing it, I think the environment will let us know if we're missing it, and certainly the business community will let us know if we're missing that. So I think it's a commitment.
Lesser in conflict, because maybe the business community say, wow, you're doing a great job, and the locals will say, no, and then when you help the locals out, the business community is going to say, God, you're killing us, you gotta, you gotta do it. It's a tough balancing act, that's why I, I prefer this for people that are elected because they're held accountable to the public. When you're not, it just depends where that person stands.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're lucky in that we have a really strong committed group that are all working on this. I don't think people have spent, I haven't spent hours of my life committed to this, to, to not see change happen. I mean, it's, it has not been working, what's happening in Tahoe, and we need to, we need to put a system in place to, to change things.
I just wanted to say, please understand, I appreciate what you're doing, I know you guys are committed, it's not a personal shot, it's just a general observation shot. Sorry, Walt.
No, that's true. I just, I just want to make one point, is the, the reason there's such a difference in the size of the surveys is just, there's 40,000 residents and there's 15 million visitors, so you just end up with a different amount based on those.
Apology accepted, by the way. Every time I hear the words sustainable, sustainability, I cringe, because that goes back like 30 years into a plan that was going to be a sustainable thing to make population areas around agriculture. That scared the hell out of me, I'm sorry, French. The other thing, I'm looking at the number of activities or entities that are in this plan, and I'm suggesting that you are probably facing the very same thing our founding fathers did in the Constitutional Convention, to get everybody to say yes to every point that you're going to have to put into these constitutions. And you have, don't have enough money to do that yet, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, Nettie can jump in here whenever, but I will say, it's been a long process, and there is incredible trust built amongst all of those partners, so we haven't had that issue yet. I think everybody is equally committed to figuring out how to make change, and that's what brings everybody together. What that exactly looks like on the ground may be different, but so far, everyone sits around the table and says, yeah, we want July 5th, 2024 to look very different than it looked July 5th, 2023. And so we pick different core issues that everybody has alignment around, and then we all work together to figure out, how do we solve that?
Okay, given the input you got from the surveys, have you come up with anything that even looks like beginnings of a constitution? In other words, a business plan, if you will?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a 150-page plan, which is kind of the start of that plan. We signed a MOU with everybody, as all the partners together, and then I think everybody's individual contributions are their way of saying, okay, I, this is my financial commitment to see this plan through.
So, did I, can I have, can I have a couple more minutes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I know, and I know you're supremely involved in this because this is in your neck of the woods, your, your basins, but, but what I would like to add to this is that the, the concept of managing versus creating tourism, I'm hearing, maybe not on a daily basis, but very often basis, that there appears to be growing a anti-business, anti-business climate within the Tahoe Basin by a whole host of, of organizations, and trying to limit or regulate the amount of tourism coming into the basin, which drives, which drives the businesses. And so I'm hearing, and that's a supreme concern of mine, because I'm hearing from business owners up there, not only their failing businesses, but also they're, because of the business climate that, that is being created, or the anti-business climate that's being created, people are looking at vacating. And, and that, that is a supreme concern of mine, that businesses would be leaving our, our area because of the feeling that we're anti-business, and certainly this county is not anti-business. So I think that's another conundrum that you have to deal with, is, is while you're trying to manage the, the ecosystem, so to speak, really, in traffic, and in clarity of the lake, and the other aspects, environmental aspects of maintaining the lake. And it's interesting, as you probably know, we have the National Outdoor Recreation Conference coming to the Tahoe Lewis Event Center this next week, starting on Monday. So I, I've been asked to do, deliver some opening remarks to that, and, and I'm looking forward to it, but at the same point in time, there is a extreme balance that has to be, that has to be addressed to make sure that the businesses feel welcome, and they are going to offer a, a great opportunity for our community, but at the same point in time, wrestling with the quality of life of the, the permanent residents there, and, and then the other organizations that are, are trying to limit visitors into the basin. So anyways, a true conundrum, okay? I, I don't have an answer. I, you know, so.
I just want you to know that, that we see that, and that is why it's three equal pillars to this plan. It's the bit, it's the economy, which is business, it's the local community, and it's the environment. And those three things have to stay in balance with you, with each other. We can't choose one over the other, or we'll probably lose all of them.
And we didn't want to be, you know, shooting the messenger here, okay? So I, I hope you all take this and, you know, in, in the, in the manner in which it's intended, please.
We're really trying to see change happen, and so the more feedback we can get, the more change we can make, so we actually really appreciate this.
I guess it's my turn. Welcome to the lion's den. Aren't you glad you came? The shark tank, no, no, that, that's too much saltwater. As you may have gathered, these are the folks that get the telephone calls from the angry citizens. We are the ones that have to deal with the aftermath. We are the ones that try to come up with ways of dealing with the calls that we get. The poop calls, the helicopter calls. I've got a helicopter that flies over my house twice a day, make it stop. Well, call the FAA, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to come out there with a terror We have, I, I have been a resident here for over 32 years. I moved here because I loved Lake Tahoe. The rest of the valley's okay, but I, I moved here because I loved Lake Tahoe. And I have seen things happen that I, is just unconscionable. Part of, part of our concern is that 18%, which is a very large number of people, I remember during COVID, going into my local Safeway supermarket, seeing carts of booze being loaded out of the store and into pickup trucks and into the ice chests, and then everything just left laying on the ground as they drive away. That's, that's one of the things that the citizens of our county, or at least of Lake Tahoe, are really concerned about. They trash our beaches. They trash our roads. On the fourth, I live on Elk Point Road, and on the Fourth of July, we have to come out the next day to collect all the beer bottles and the wrappers from the food that they just throw on the ground when they're done with their partying. How do we stop that?
Well, that, that is why we have an operations working group, is to try to address that exactly. I mean, there's, there's three main techniques to change behavior in the world. There is education, there is enforcement, and then there is engineering or designing a solution. And when it comes to litter, it might not be as hard as we're making it out to be, it might just mean more trash cans in more places. Now, that's tricky in Tahoe because we live with bears, so you can't just put a $50 trash can out there, you have to have a bear-safe trash can, and then you have to coordinate with the refuse company to pick it up on holiday weekends and things like that, but that's exactly what that working group is working on right now. You're probably familiar with the Forest Service Incident Command structure. If there is a high fire danger in Tahoe, they will call Incident Command, and they will strategically locate, you know, aircraft around and, and firefighters, in case something breaks out, they can nip it as soon as possible. And so we are bringing that same thinking to this issue. So we're looking at peak days, and especially big days like July 4th, and how can we use Incident Command thinking for the whole region, everybody at the table, the public and private sector, law enforcement, to figure out, how do we have those things on the ready when we know people are coming? So that's, that is a big goal of this effort for the summer.
Well, for one, I appreciate your efforts. I, I know what, it's a hell of a problem, and I know this sets the local residents against, against each other, some saying, let them come, some saying, get them out of here. But I really hope that you are able to make an impact, and I really hope that you find some way of changing human behavior, because they've been working on that for the last couple of centuries, as far as I know, and so far, not so good. So thank you for coming, thank you for your presentation, and do you have any questions of us?
No, yeah, I mean, we'd love to have somebody from Douglas County, from the staff, join either the council or the working groups, are great opportunities, kind of dip your toe in the water and see what this is all about, I think that would be great. But I, I want to say thank you, Chairman, because this isn't the same old group that's been working on this, I think Nettie mentioned it, but this is an entirely new table that was set with new partners. I mean, that slide with those logos, the head of the Forest Service had never met the head of LTVA in person until we signed the documentation. Like, we take for granted that these organizations are all working in the same space, but until Destination Storageship, they hadn't worked together collectively, so I hope you'll give us a chance to show you that we can make change and support something that's trying to make change before we have a chance to prove you wrong, so.
Well, thank you for coming, and thank you for what you're trying to do.
Yeah, thank you.
And with that, we will take a 10-minute break. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We were going to, I think we had a consensus down at this end of the table.
Thanks, Nikki. Thanks for facilitating this, getting here and working.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time, guys. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time, guys.
All right, everybody's back in their places, so let's try to finish this out and see if, how far we can go before lunchtime, or if we're gonna have one. So, welcome back, Commissioner Hales. And we will move on to item number four. For possible action, discussion on the appointment of one member of the Douglas County Audit Committee for a term of four years with an expiration date of December 31st, 2027. Madam Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This item appears on your agenda as a result of a anticipated vacancy on the Audit Committee. We did solicit interested applications to fill this spot, and we received three individuals for your consideration. I was advised that subsequently, or subsequent to submitting her application, Ms. Dodge is respectfully withdrawing her name from consideration. That leaves you with two individuals, Mr. William Brown and Mr. Kirby Mays. I do believe that both indicated their availability to attend the meeting. Mr. Mays did introduce himself to us earlier, so I know he, audience, I don't know if Brown is here. Oh, yep, he just waved. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back to the commission. If you would like, it's up to you, if you would like to speak to the applicants. I do believe they would be prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I think that since they were nice enough to show up, the least we can do is give them some time to tell us why we should or should not pick them. So, why don't we start with Mr. Kirby?
How do I turn this thing on? It's on, okay. So my name's Kirby Mays. I've been on the Audit Committee before, in 2019, 2020, when Mr. Maxwell was, was leading it. I retired in 2016 from the high-tech industry, aerospace industry. I'm a, I'm a microwave design engineer by background, although I've had various assignments from design engineer to vice president as I went through my career. Since retiring, I've been involved in ham radio clubs here, been heavily involved in the Elks the last couple of years. I was a trustee last year, and I'm one of the officers this year. Why am I doing this? I love living here. I don't want to give back to the community. Pretty much the same reason I had in 2019, 2020. I'm not an accountant, although I've been an engineering manager basically all my career, so I've seen a lot of plans, managed a lot of plans, and so I know how to look for issues. I know in 2019, we had an outside company doing the auditing, and that's, that was the main reason we existed, was to oversee what they were doing and provide feedback. Any questions for me?
Apparently not, sir. So, thank you for your presentation. And, Mr. Brown?
Okay, it is on now. Thank you. Name is William Brown. I am a ten-year resident here in Douglas County. Before I retired, I was a certified public accountant for over fifty years. My first license was issued in shoe law, law of 1973. I have had experience working for firms, so I'm extremely familiar with how the financial audit should go. I feel I'm extremely well-qualified for the spot. My involvement has been here in our community. I volunteered with the Carson Sheriff's Office for five years. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner Hales? Okay, any other member of the board with questions? All right, sir. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest. All right, I will bring it back to the board. We were down to two candidates, so either we use the double-headed coin, or it tells you win.
Mr. Chair, I believe this is for possible action, so before we come to the board for a, a motion, I think we need to go to public comment.
Yes, we do. I was looking for comments from the board before we went to public.
I'll just say, I, I think both of them would be great additions. One has already been on the Audit Committee and has had experience there, and I think the other one's qualifications. Mr. Brown's fifty years as a certified accountant certainly qualifies him also.
I concur. All right, so if the board has had their say, we will take it open for public comment. Is there any public comment on the candidates?
Jason Gibson, the Mal administrative Audit Council in and for Douglas County. Earlier this week, there was a board, a board budget, budget meeting, and in that budget meeting, as they were informing us that there was going to be a tightening of the belt. We're not going to be funding those nonprofits like we used to. We're going to be restricting monies that should go to art culture. Wasn't a single recommendation from the Audit Committee whatsoever. No policy decision kinds of suggestions or information. The Audit Committee doesn't really exist, folks, just like our norms and procedures and the other twenty-two committees don't really exist. You got five people up here making all the decisions, each one of them part of five to ten other councils and committees, basically being told what to do by the county manager and Douglas Ritchie. Ritchie rich. So, don't be fooled, whoever's the candidate, whoever their disillusion, whatever their disillusions may be with regard to that function of that Audit Committee, that was spearheaded by Walt Noah Sad last year when he was supposed to be doing a thorough audit of the Jalek facility. And now we know that that Jalek facility has tripled in price. It's not fifty-five acres, folks, it's fifty-seven acres. It's total cop city. And they're going to deploy all of our resources to that ugly building that the Planning Commission shut down and said, you know what, that just doesn't fit the rural character of Douglas County?
Sir, we're getting off topic. This is about the candidates that are applying for this position. All right, any further public comment? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any recommendations or suggestions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In full disclosure, I just want to note that both of these candidates had lobbied me on behalf of their candidacy, and so I told them I would certainly consider both of those. I have to also admit that when we had this vacancy, you know, it always seems like after we have these vacancies, we have more people come forward that should have perhaps come before us when, when these openings were occurring before. But anyways, knowing, and so while I appreciate the, the talents that Mr. Brown brings to this, I'm inclined to stay with the individual that was previously on the, on the Audit Committee, and so I would at this time make a motion that we appoint Kirby Mays to that four-year position on the Audit Committee.
I have no problem voting with Kirby Mays if he gets the nomination, but I, I like the fifty years of service and the certified accountant degree, and I would lean towards Mr. Brown if, if the other mem, if there's two other members that would incline to do so.
I'm going to second Chairman's nomination.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hales, do you have any input?
I just want to thank both for applying. Very much appreciate their willingness to serve our community.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. And thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, thank you for showing up, and please don't let this discourage you. There's lots of positions for people to volunteer for in the county, and thank you for your interest. All right, we will move on to item number five. For possible action, discussion on one appointment to the Douglas County Airport Advisory Committee. In accordance with the Douglas County Code, Chapter 2.58, the appointee would fill the remaining unexpired term of a member from the community at large for a term of May 2nd, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Madam Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for the record. This item appears on the agenda as suggested when you read the title. Sir, we have a vacancy on the Airport Advisory Committee in a community-at-large capacity. We have a vacancy on the Airport Advisory Committee in a community at-large capacity. We have three individuals who have expressed interest in their application, two of which indicated they were available to attend today. Ms. Ashbaugh and Ms. Dinkler should be in the audience. I see one. So we will be able to invite them forward. Mr. Gardner has been previously interviewed and expressed interest in his position on the Airport Advisory Committee. He regrettably indicated he is not available, unfortunately, to speak with you again today, but did ask that you consider his previous interest. With that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back over to the Commission for discussion.
All right, so we have two of the candidates present today?
Maybe just one.
Maybe just one.
Yeah.
All right. Would the candidate be so kind to approach the microphone? You saw what happened to the last one, so stand by.
The really cool thing is this one's really easy to qualify for. I moved to the community in 1994. I've been here since, in the community since 94. I was in Tahoe, came back, came down here and moved here permanently in 2005. Sorry, I'm short. So I've been in the community area since 94. I moved to Douglas County in 2005, raised my children here. I've been a local business owner here since 2007, opened my retail store in 2014. I did serve on, I was an elected board member for the East Fork Swim District for four years, which was a wonderful experience. I really enjoyed the opportunity. I think like all of us here, I'm very passionate about our community, and I just, if I can find a way to help, I like to do that. I'm not exactly sure what a community at-large member does for an airport, but, you know, I certainly try to be involved in the community in any way I can, supporting anything I, like I'm co-sponsoring the Hot Air for Hope this, coming up here in just a couple of weeks. So just, I really love this community and thought I'd apply and give it, you know, give back a little bit anywhere I can. So I'm not sure, like I said, what the title does or what I'll do, but I try to pay attention and put the community's best interest at heart. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
I note in your resume that you were a basic helicopter crewman. What does a basic helicopter crewman do?
Best moment of my life.
Oh, I got the wrong one.
That'd be exciting, though. Maybe on the list of I didn't know I was going to do's.
Reason I asked, no.
In the future, I intend to pursue my pilot's license. I'm a licensed skydiver, but I intend to fly instead of jump, so I have, and I also do a lot in the hot air balloon community, so the flights and aviations and all that's kind of interesting to me anyway. It is something I pursue and help out on, do things like that.
All right, thank you. Now that we're on the right page, any, any questions from the board? All right, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Good luck. All right, any input from the board before I go to public comment?
I have to disclose that one of the candidates shares a last name and has no relationship, so anyways.
For top.
And that's all right, we won't hold that against them. All right, if there's no further input from the board, we will open this to public comment.
Mr. Chair, before we have public comment, I would hope that the public understands that what we're discussing here is the acceptability or unacceptability of these three candidates and nothing beyond that. Otherwise, it borders on an open meeting law violation.
Correct.
All three candidates are exceptionally qualified. I say we find ways and means to employ and deploy their expertise, all three of them. But the last candidate, and I missed your name there, sorry, Alicia, I know that the Sky Clan, Sky Pilots are exceptional people, and we had Dick living at the house there for a spell, and he's the, I think he's a head instructor out there. So it'd be great to have folks like that who are on the Airport Advisory Committee. They're a fun group of folks. In fact, we're going to do a disclosure drop with Dick and push our Peace Through Culture campaign, so I'm voting for you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? In that case, I will bring it back to the board for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would suggest that three times the term, you know, Mr. Gardner's come before us several times before and had, I think at one point in time actually had three commissioners' voice and an attitude about appointing him. So that would be my inclination is to appoint Mr. Gardner. Once again, no relationship to the board.
Commissioner Hales, any comments?
Was there a second? If not, I would, are we discussing? I would agree.
Okay.
I would agree. Appreciate all of them and hope that they will, the other two will reapply if, when vacancies open up. Mr. Gardner is exceptionally qualified and, not just qualified, but committed to this airport and knows this airport extremely well, and I appreciate his willingness to
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I think it would be, anyways, I want to make sure we recognize the reason why we have this opening, okay? We had Mr. Ursick, A.J. Ursick, who was previously appointed during our discussions last December for renewal on his position as a community member at large on the Airport Advisory Committee. He was serving as the vice chair of that and has, has been involved in the, in the airport and other pertinent issues within our county. And unfortunately, several months ago, diagnosed with terminal cancer and passed away on March 22nd of this year. So we want to make sure that we recognize his service to our community and, and I don't, I don't think it would be wise or, I don't think it would be proper to, to have that unsaid, okay? So I want to recognize his contributions to that. And in light of that, with this vacancy, I move the appointment of Tim Gardner to that unexpired term.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Gardner, as you said, third time's the charm. And I will bring it back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Gardner, say aye.
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 And it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gardner, and thank you for your, your interest, and thank you for coming. And trust me, we have other openings coming up. Thank you so much.
I would like to make a comment with.
Yes, sir.
I really appreciate, Alicia, right, showing up, being the only person here. I would, normally would have given that the nod if Mr. Gardner hadn't shown such great perseverance or persistence, I guess, in doing it, so thank you.
For possible action, discussion on the adoption of Ordinance 2024-1636 and ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and planning development overlay district for APNs 1220-03-000-034 and 1220-03-000-043 by number one repealing ordinance number 2006-1179, which changed the zoning on the subject property from A19 agricultural 19-acre minimum lot size to SFR 8,000, single-family residential 8,000 square foot minimum lot size. Public facilities and service industrial with a PD plan development overlay, PD 06-003, because the associated development was never inaugurated and the tentative MAC expired. And two, reclassifying the subject property is SFR 8,000, single-family residential 8,000 square foot minimum lot size. MFR, multi-family residential, 24,000 square foot minimum lot size. PF, public facilities, and NC, neighborhood commercial with a PD plan development overlay. The board will also consider adoption of three associated tentative subdivision maps, DP 23-0050, DP 23-0051, and DP 24-0014. The subject property is located south of Toller Lane and east of Mueller Parkway, within the Virginia Ranch specific plan in the Gardnerville Community Plan. The applicant is Stan Lucas, and the applicant's representative is Chris Baker, Manhard Counseling. Second reading, Katie Morales O'Neill. Did I get it right again?
Good, very close. Good afternoon, Kate Morales O'Neill, for the record. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chairman Rice, you get a pass after that mouthful. You have to end with a name like mine, so you actually got the hard part right, Morales O'Neill. It was Katie. You called me Katie, which you didn't know me in my childhood, so that throws me, but you did a great job. So good afternoon, everyone. Staff is recommending adoption of Ordinance 2024-1636, as well as approval of the associated tentative subdivision maps, DP 23-0050, DP 23-0051, and DP 24-0014, as presented and subject to the conditions set forth in Exhibit A. I'd like to bring up Chris Baker from Manhard Consulting. He will be giving you brief background and presentation for Virginia Ranch. Chris?
Do you want me to switch it, or do you? No, it's fine. We'll just. Can I have that? I'm pleased to say it's still good morning. Thank you for having us today. Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. I think everyone's really familiar with Virginia Ranch. This is the realization of a specific plan that was approved 20 years ago. Obviously, there's been some iterations over time. It's, it's gone through a settlement agreement and most recently a modification to kind of bring it to current standards that this board approved last year. So with that, as you can see in Ariel over here, maybe? It's not working. No, I was trying to fast-forward here. It's not working. You just go to the next slide. It's on U control. Project location, you can see the borders there in red, south of Toller Lane, east of Highway 395, and the Mueller Parkway extension runs along the western boundary. Go ahead. As mentioned, the applications in front of you, there are five. So zoning map amendment, PD overlay, and then three tentative maps for three different planning areas. The zoning map amendment as proposed, you see there existing on the left, current designations are SFR 8, public facility, and A19. As you recall, there is some industrial on the, on the southern tip there, and as you recall, the public facility was mostly in place for the school site, which this board, in conjunction with approval from the school district, removed last year. And what's proposed is on the right. Again, we have maintaining the SFR 8. We have some neighborhood commercial. We maintain the public facility in some areas, and we're introducing MFR. I know there were some discussions regarding the MFR and the densities at the first reading. The MFR, unfortunately, because of the, the densities outlined and approved in the specific plan and the gap in zoning designations in Douglas County, we have SFR 8, which is 5.45 units to the acre, and there's nothing in between that and multi-family, which is 16 dwelling units to the acre. But as you'll see with these maps, even the areas that we're proposing to have the MFR on, which are, pointer's not working either. I got you. Which are these areas here and here, they are single-family in nature, and they're, they're more in line with six dwelling units to the acre and not the 16, so we'll get into that a little bit. Go ahead. PD overlay, as you may or may not know, this is required in any receiving area, and as you know, this is a receiving area. What we're doing here also is making sure that design standards comply with the approved specific plan that this board approved. So total area is the entire boundary, a little over 196 acres. There are the three tentative map areas that are in front of you. There are three future development areas, so nothing proposed today, but earmarked for development in the future. And what this does is provide guidelines, right? So tells you what you can and can't do and where things can be located and what it looks like. And then also an abundance of open space. You'll see there's, there's parks, there's trails, there's a bunch of retention and detention areas also. It implements the existing receiver area master plan, as I, as I mentioned, then provides consistently with that Virginia Ranch specific plan as indicated. And remember, there is a max number of units of 1,020. There's actually only 642 in front of you today, but there is that cap. And then it allows for a variety of residential development. So the goal here wasn't to just have 5,000 square foot lots across the board. We're trying to do, you know, some multi-family, some, some courtyard houses and other things, so, so this plan sets forth requirements for that. And then it also clarifies and defines some of the guidelines that were kind of vacant in code and vacant in the approved specific plan. Okay, overall site plan, this is more, just to kind of navigate the rest of the presentation, everything you see there will be included in the PD. The main bulk of the property, kind of on the interior, which is the blue, is the single-family tentative map, which is just standard residential lots as, as you're used to seeing. Then we have the cottages north, which is kind of the peak boundary there, which is this, and then the cottages south, which is here, and then the future development areas are the remainder, so here and all the way on the southern end. Okay, so again, there's three tentative maps. This is the first one. It is the largest, and it is a traditional, single-family residential subdivision map. Total area, a little over 132 acres, 470 residential lots. The smallest lot size is 5,000 square feet, in accordance with the PD and in accordance with the approved specific plan. Largest lot size, as you can see, is a little over 15,000 square feet, so they do vary quite a bit. Average lot size, a little over 6,000 square feet, and I want you to really pay attention to the project density. So again, we talked about the, the SFR 8, which is what this area is going to be zoned. That project density is 5.45. This is actually only being proposed as three and a half dwelling units per acre, and it is because of that 132 acres, we have nearly 20 acres of open space. I'll talk about parks, but as you can see, everything kind of outlined there in green is for parks that are going to be open to not just the, the residents of this map or the Virginia Ranch community as a whole, but for Douglas County, for everyone in Douglas County. So go ahead. You know, I'm going to skip over the parks and go back to them, so if you can just skip through the. Perfect, thanks, Kate. Okay, so the north cottages tentative map. So this is a little bit different of a product type, right? So we have the goal of variety of houses. So what you see here, this is one of the MFR designations, so it allows for up to 16 dwelling units to the acre, but in trying to provide a variety of housing types, what we've done here is, we're actually just selling the footprint, right? So when you, when you So when you drive down the street, it looks like a traditional, single-family residential subdivision. But the buyer would actually only buy the footprint of the home. The other things would be, like, front yard landscaping would be maintained by HOA. So you have a, this is more geared towards first-time home buyers, right? And then, we'll talk later, the cottages south is more geared towards downsizers. So the same product where they have one and two stories, but you'll see because of the location criteria and then kind of the parks that we're implementing, it's a real different buyer. So total project area, a little over 17 acres, total units 116. Smallest lot is really not applicable here because we are just selling the footprint. Project density, like I had mentioned, whereas the zoning allows for 16 dwelling units to the acre, we're actually only proposing a little over six and a half. And then total common area and open space is nearly nine and a half acres of that 17. So you can see up here in the corner, and I'll talk about it more, is one of our parks. We're proposing both active and passive uses in these parks as well as a trail network that connects everything, and I'll get into that a little bit more.
Chris, Mr. Baker, would it be okay to ask you a question as we go through this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Rather than wait until the end? I'm not sure I'm familiar with that term, selling a footprint.
Okay.
Can you explain that a little bit better? Does that mean that as a home buyer, I would be buying only the land and then I would put the product on? That's, I've never heard that term before. I'm sorry.
So think about this more as, I guess, as a row house or a townhouse-type product, right? So what happens here, it functions as a single-family. They're not attached, right? But the footprint itself, so the foundation that your home is constructed on. See, these homes will be built by the builder and for sale. But the footprint itself, so everything that your foundation's on up, you will purchase. And then you will have, your front yard would actually be what's called a limited common area and your rear yard for your sole purpose, right? So what it does is it allows for us to provide a very quality product and focus on the architecture of the home itself and providing the standards that are in Douglas County code in the specific plan, but yet have a little bit smaller of a lot and a lot that's maintained by an HOA. So you ensure that, you know, front yard landscaping is nice and consistent. And really what it does is it alleviates the burden of a lot of those responsibilities of maybe first-time home buyers or downsizers.
Well, what about the backyard? It looks like there's a common area between the homes on the roads there, that light green area between the homes. And it looks like there's specified lot size. But are those going to have fences between the lots?
They will have fences.
They'll still have fences. So the homeowner will actually be responsible for maintaining their yard, backyard.
Correct.
But the front will be a community, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
So if you're driving down the street, it would look just like a residential subdivision that you're used to, but it's a way to use a technique to, again, keep consistency of front yard landscaping and kind of beautification of the neighborhood, but it also will help lower the price point a little bit.
I'm sorry, I visited with you earlier this week when you called and I said I didn't really have any questions, but, so I apologize for that.
Oh, not a problem. Okay, and so the cottages south, again, so the cottages north was all the way on the northern end of the property, nearly adjacent to Toller and by the future roundabout of Mueller Parkway. The cottages south is all the way on the southern tip here. So it is in close proximity to existing hospital facilities. There's more walkable shopping and things of this nature. This is a smaller footprint. When I mean footprint, I mean we're talking about eight and a half total acres, where the other one was a little over 17. Total number of units is 56. Again, the smallest lot size isn't applicable, but the density still ranges around the same, right? About six and a half dwelling units per acre. Common area is a little over five and a half acres. This we envision being geared towards downsizers. There's one-story options. You know, this is the benefit of having, you know, landscaping that is maintained, you know, by a maintenance association or an HOA. You know, as if you're selling your home, then maybe you lived elsewhere in Douglas County and you're looking for a little less square footage. You know, you're looking for a little bit less responsibility. This is the ideal product for you. So you still get your rear yard, you get someone else to help maintain your front yard, and you get a little bit smaller lot. So that's the goal with this. You know what? I'm going to go back to the parks, yeah. So a big component of the approved specific plan was the introduction of parks. So we do have the four parks. Park one is located within the boundaries of the cottages north tentative map. So again, I mentioned they were active and passive uses. This is an active, a very active park. It's geared towards families, and that's the target audience with that first-time home buyer. If you recall, when this came back before you for the amendment, you know, active uses were, a splash pad was specifically outlined. So there in blue is a splash pad. You do have a picnic area, a gazebo, you have a playground. And then you have plenty of active kind of turf area. If you note that there is the trail system that connects to the north, the sidewalk system that connects to the south, east, and west. And then what we've done is we've strategically provided the splash pad in the centralized location, so it's away from the future residents. And then, even though it's not required, we provided a bunch of additional parking because this is going to be open to Douglas County, not just the residents that could walk here. But if someone does want to drive there, we've got plenty of parking for people outside the community to use this use. The second park is kind of in the, I guess it's the eastern section, northeast section. This is more of a passive park on the southern half. So it has kind of residential gardens, is what you can see here. You know, so these will be, you know, opportunities for residents to grow vegetables, other things like that, kind of a gathering area. We have some passive turf. And then on the northern side, connected to the trail, we actually have two dog parks. Dog park for small dogs, dog park for big dogs. And again, I think it's important to mention, all of these parks will be constructed by the developer and maintained by the HOA. So this is not something that's going to be on the tax roll or a maintenance burden for Douglas County itself. Go ahead. Okay, third park, this is actually the largest park. It's kind of central to the community. So when you arrive off of Mueller Parkway, you'll actually have kind of a line of sight directly into the park. You can see there is a large gazebo adjacent to the parking area, a bunch of turf for active uses. Like I had mentioned, a picnic area. There was a specific requirement for kind of active workout equipment. Kind of, you know, you see the sit-up station, you see the pull-up bars. So those are adjacent to that walking path that's on the western side. So this will be kind of the heart of the community. Again, it has both active and passive uses. And the last park is all the way on the southern section, adjacent to the future collector extension. So if you were to go off Mueller now, drive by Walmart, you have your roundabout, and this will be the park you see right across the, from that. This is really passive in nature. It's meant to provide a nice entry monument, kind of a sense of arrival, a sense of place. There's not tons of maintenance on this. It's very natural. But it is, there will be signage, there will be trail connectivity and other things. But this is more to break up the roadway and to help, you know, delineate, hey, you've arrived in Virginia Ranch. Just go to phasing real quick. Okay, so the phasing plan, we're proposing 11 phases. Again, this is broken down, anytime you're approving a PD, you have to come up with a phasing plan and associated improvements. As you can see, phase one is Mueller Parkway. I know that's been a topic of discussion, not just with this board, but the community as a whole. Those plans have been submitted. They were actually submitted last year, and that phase one is ready to go as soon as we get a permit. Phase two is the collector, which is in red. So again, we're doing the backbone infrastructure before we do any of the residential development. And that includes all the necessary utilities. Phase three, that is that cottages north that we had talked about, there in the light blue. Phase four would be the cottages south. This thing's very finicky. And then phases five, six, seven, and eight are various portions, about a quarter of each of the residential, single-family. And then nine, 10, and 11 are the future development phases. And again, this is, each tentative map has, you know, requirements. You know, it's allowed for four years, and then you have a subsequent map every two years. You know, so this isn't something, hopefully the infrastructure comes online very, very quickly. But this isn't something, obviously with your growth ordinance and other things, this isn't something that's all going to be built very quickly. You know, it's going to be on demand, and the lifecycle of this is going to be as needed to meet your growth management ordinance. Okay, here's, the architecture for the single-family development is dictated in the approved specific plan, right? So because that's a single-family typical subdivision, so each individual builder that came in will provide architecture, but it is strictly regulated with the elements and the designs are outlined. And actually, we're already approved by this board. But we're showing you the cottages because that's something that is a little bit unique, and we wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of what these things are going to look like. You can just kind of scroll through them. So again, kind of mix of one and two stories, a little bit smaller footprint, geared towards first-time home buyers on the north and downsizers on the south. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one question, and I was hoping that you'd cover that in your speech, but you did. You have a road access that you're going to create that'll take it into the industrial space?
Go back to the, maybe the overall of the phasing, right there, that works. So when you say to the industrial space, do you mean this stuff here?
The industrial businesses.
So there is not, there's not an access easement to get into this industrial space? As I understand it?
Mr. Delair? You were excited yesterday. I just wanted to...
I am. Tom Delair, Community Development for the record. I am excited about this. This is something that we had talked about with the developer early on in this process. And what they were, what we were alluding to yesterday was they purchased this property right behind La Sag for an eventual road. It won't have any parking. It'll just be a two-way street that would then intersect with this road here that they're proposing in the subdivision onto Mueller Parkway. And they'll be working through that. It's not part of this particular plan, but they're going to be working on it.
But that's the one you were referring to, and that takes you into the industrial businesses right now. What's the name of that road?
So Industrial Way. Industrial Way would have an access point straight directly to Mueller Parkway.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Apparently, I go out of town and things change.
So anyways, I'm glad that this project is finally coming to fruition, okay? It's been on the books for some 20 years plus. And so it's good to see this happening. And certainly, you know, the phase one of building out of Mueller is certainly critical to this community. And I like phase two as well. I really appreciate, and we've had a lot of residents concerned, and that is the starter home phase really sounds exciting to this community and the downsizing capacity also. So I congratulate you on recognizing those two aspects. And I like the idea of infrastructure first, okay? So many times, our residents are concerned that we're not paying attention to the infrastructure before the homes go in. And so all of those aspects are really, really good. I did have one question for you, and it came up through a member of the public and a suggestion. You know, we're always concerned, these roads are going to be dedicated as county roads. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Delair? Is Kate? Are those, are these county roads?
So actually...
I know phase one is, but what about phase two?
Some of them are, some of them aren't. Actually, the internal roadways are actually going to be handled by the town as part of the...
They're going to be covered by the town?
Correct.
Okay. So a unique concept was brought forward, and I don't know whether it's acceptable to you. I'm just going to mention this, okay? We have very few, and this is not going to, this is going to take a long time to build out. It's not going to be tomorrow, and it's not going to be probably all phases within the next 10 years perhaps, okay? And the concerns are that while the developer goes in and builds the initial roads, okay, after it's built out, then as these roads have deteriorated over that period of time, that the developer now turns those roads over in perhaps a deteriorated manner to the town or the county for resurfacing or reconditioning or maintenance. And so a unique concept was brought by a member of a community yesterday, as I heard. And what is the feeling of the developer in regards to, after this is all built out, for the developer to go back in and take a look at the conditions of the roads and make sure that those conditions are brought back up to county standards or town standards before basically the final phase? Is there any thought process or any feelings from the developer in that regards to that concept?
Yeah. So I mean, I'm going to defer to the county on that. But typically, the way it works is they get constructed by the developer. They're offered for dedication, right? And then they're accepted or not accepted, right? So there is an opportunity for the county and inspections. I don't know the process intimately in Douglas County, but I would envision there being some sort of inspection process. But again, the only roads associated with the county are the collector and Mueller itself. Everything else is going to be the towns.
That is a very good answer to the question. I appreciate that, yeah. So before, they're dedicated to the county, and we've had a number of them come before us, right? Where they haven't previously been dedicated. But then that was the question we really had several months ago when we dedicated several roads, right? We took on several roads because they were up to county standards. And I know that there's roads within the county that we have not accepted dedication to the county because we didn't feel like they were meeting county standards, and we didn't want to have to go back in and recondition those roads. So good answer, and I appreciate that. I have no other questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, this is for possible action. And Charlotte, did you have anything? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hales, did you have anything that you wanted to ask or add?
Thank you for asking. I did have several questions that I was able to get answered prior to the meeting. And so I don't have any right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will open this for public comment.
Jason Gibson, 40-year resident, Gardner Ville Ranchos. Keeping Douglas County rural. One of four, maybe five, commercial developments. Let me tell you how frustrating it is to build a house with your own hands over 40 years and not be able to enjoy it because of these jokers and their overhead. We're not going to be able to make it here. The commercialism and the traffic on our roads is so horrendous, killing our pets, garbage, four liquor stores within a stone's throw, monster trucks running up and down your road all hours of the night and day. Sinage on both ends of our Langley Drive that says, "No commercial traffic unless delivery." Law enforcement don't care. They won't even enforce the code. We've informed them time and time again. Selling you out, Douglas County. You're not going to be, you're not going to enjoy it here. It's not a place to be anymore. It's done.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Board. Is anyone ready to try to make a motion?
If I may, if I may, Chairman Rice, Kate Morales O'Neil for the record. I failed to mention, I did give, bring today just the updated Page 694 of your packet. I just updated the... I just updated the staff report to reflect today's motion, I still had in, Peak did not save my updated, it still had the first reading verbiage from April 4th, so it's just been updated, it's page 694 of your staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a recommended ordinance, would anybody like to try to bite that off?
Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm making up for my two years as chair, but I'm not making any motions, so, for two years, so I will make a motion, and, and anyways, at this time, I moved through the adoption of ordinance 2024-1636, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and plan development overlay district for APNs 1220-03-000-034 and 1220-0-03-000-043 as presented. I would just, I would just like to say in that regard is that this project has been on the books for over 20 years, and, and it's, so it's not a new development coming to us, and, and it's also a vested project, which means that it's not subject to the growth management ordinance, so we really have no control of this, and if they wanted to, although I don't expect them to, if they wanted to, they could break ground on this and build all 1,020 homes tomorrow, if they had the necessary permits, right? So anyways, it's not a new project.
But good luck getting financing for all those at one time. Okay, so I'll bring it back to the board, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and thank you for bringing this forward, and we look forward to your project.
I want to make another observation, it's, I know it's 12:30, but we only have three more items before us, and so if it's to the pleasure of the rest of the board, I would suggest that we power through this and, and not take a lunch break today in the middle of this.
Barring any objections, that's exactly what I was thinking that we need to do, and I see the thumbs up from Commissioner Hales. So we will move on to item number seven, and this is for possible action, discussion on the adoption of ordinance 2024-1637, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment for the site of the proposed Douglas County Justice Center, a 57-acre parcel on APN 1320-28-000-045 located at 1280 Buckeye Road, changing the zoning designation from A19 agricultural 19-acre minimum size lot to public facilities. The subject parcel is located in the Minden Community Plan and the Buckeye Farm Specific Plan. The applicant is Douglas County, and the applicant's representative is R.O. Anderson of R.O. Anderson Engineering. This is the second reading, and Linda Doherty, did I get that one right? There's not a lot of zeros in this one.
That was perfect. Okay, so today, as, as Chairman mentioned, we're here for the second reading of the ordinance for zoning map amendment to change the zoning from agricultural A19 to public facilities for the proposed justice center at 1280 Buckeye Road. I do want to mention that the zoning map amendment, along with a special use permit, was unanimously approved by the Minden Town Board on April 3rd. On March 12th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning map amendment, and on April 9th, they approved the special use permit. We do have also a design review submitted, it's currently under review and will be presented to the Minden Town Board at a future date. The elevation drawings in your packet were just for reference purposes, but you can disregard those because expected changes are coming forward, they're just not complete yet. And so I would like to now introduce Mr. Rob Anderson of Anderson Engineering to represent the county as the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Rob Anderson, I'm here today on behalf of Douglas County to present to you the zoning map amendment for the judicial center, uh, the justice center, excuse me, we're getting close, Scott's helping me, coach me about name changes and so forth. So the justice center, as was pointed out in the presentation by staff, is here today for a zoning map amendment, this is the second reading, as the chairman pointed out in the introduction, if you could go to that second slide, or do you, do you want me to handle it? Nope, not quite. That's, that's all right, she's probably got it, one more. So this is the request for approval to change from agricultural A19 zoning district to public facilities, it's a 57-acre parcel, please, how about I do it? And we'll keep the timing, well, better. That's all right, you're good. So this is the site, the green on the left is the existing zoning, and then with the requested change to public facility, it would turn to be consistent with the zoning maps of the county, it would be blue. This is the 57 acres, the light blue area here is a special flood hazard area, right now, that area is subject to a pending conditional letter of map revision that's being presented, or has been presented to FEMA and is currently in review. I would point out to you though, here at the south is Buckeye Road, Minden Elementary School would be off the page a little bit to the west, and the justice center itself is located here within this portion of the property, which is about 57, or excuse me, about seven and a half acres. There is an access road that is to be constructed here that will serve the justice center and access to the remainder of the county's parcel for future uses. This is a site plan of the justice center, again showing the Buckeye Road to the south, the access road would be on the east side here, and then this is the parking configuration and circulation for that. I would point out that this area essentially from about here and west, and then from about here on the site and west, is secure parking for those that would occupy the building, the district attorney's office, of course, the judges, the justice court, and the workers within it, again, clerk's office, all of those would have the opportunity for secure parking behind there. Let's see, water is being, water service to the site is provided by the town of Minden, the sewer collection is provided by Minden Gardenville Sanitation District, we anticipate an annexation, annexation map to be filed in the next couple of months, certainly in advance of the justice center going forward to construction, those will be presented to both the town of Minden and also Minden Gardenville Sanitation District. The other utilities that will serve the property include Nevada Energy, Southwest Gas, Charter, DTS Fiber, Frontier, and the like, so it'd be typical utilities, and then there has been a traffic study that was done to demonstrate and confirm that the project does meet the requirements as mitigated for, or as provided in Douglas County Code. Storm drainage, a conceptual drainage report has been prepared documenting our, that it can be constructed in compliance with the county's code. The FEMA zones, as I pointed out in the earlier exhibit, lie north, so this portion of the property is outside a special flood hazard area, and again, as pointed out previously, the access to the site is from Buckeye Road. I believe all the findings have been made, not only by our office and the planners within our office, but also by your planning staff and community development staff. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll, I will start with Commissioner Hales, we've, we've been over this more than once, so do you have any questions for Mr. Anderson, or for the county?
I don't have questions, I'm delighted this is moving forward, I did study the, the proposed plans, and, and I think they're good.
All right, thank you. And any questions from the board? All right, seeing none, I will, this is for possible action, so I will open for public comment.
Jason Gibson, Mal Administrative Audit Council for Douglas County, have been tracking this project for three years, they've been lying to us for three years. Commissioner Gardner over here was constantly shutting me down, claiming that the building was only going to run 30, 31, 33 million. It doubled that, it's at least 57 million, not including the 5 million for the land, which was 55 acres, now it's 57 acres. They didn't tell you about the 1.5 million or the 2.5 million included in the finance package that they spent on construction, pre-construction consultation or other services? They haven't told you about the financing debt that goes along with the package, which will be twice to three times the cost of what we have coined and what we know to be is cop city. It's not a justice center, and our claims that are coming forward will show what kind of business they're conducting down there, it's a total criminal enterprise, it's not for the people. They're getting filthy rich creating the crime that they're paid to police, they're expanding upon their criminal enterprise, and a militarized territory that they've created. They're flying a foreign flag in violation of the U.S. Flag Code at both the entrance and the exit of that facility. They've replaced the colors of this flag with a black and white, blue striped alternative, basically stripping the power of the 13 and replacing it with a 12-month corporate fiction. That's their flag, it represents the color of law, it's false authority, it's foreign to this nation, to this people, and it stands at the, at the entrance and the exit of that facility representing a foreign territory, military jurisdiction, run by fictitious persons claiming to represent us as peace officers, magistrates of the peace, and officers of the court. These are fictitious persons, they're white collar criminals, they're committing treason. What they've got us roped into is a form of identity theft, they've stolen your authentic identity and replaced it with a fictitious person. You are not who you think you are, and when that mail comes in the Sestave reference to that account and all caps name, what they've got you rodeoed into is nothing more than debt slavery, and when they pledge allegiance to this flag, which stripes are going sideways, that's the perpetual militarization of the police state and the Libra codes of the early 1900s that'll have us cast into perpetual bankruptcy and perpetual emergencies that they're banking off of.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board, does anyone have a motion?
Me again, huh? Okay. I move for the adoption of ordinance 2024-1637 as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, Commissioner Hale seconds. Any further discussion from the board? In that case, I will call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and Mr. Anderson, you're, you can't escape yet, so we'll move on to item number eight, for possible action, discussion on land division application DP24-0005, a request for a merger and re-subdivision, an amendment of an existing subdivision map, AM96-01, to reduce the number of parcel units from 49 to 43 in the MFR multifamily residential zoning district in the Sierra Planning Area. The parcel is located at 323 Tramway Drive, APN 1319-30-544-000 through 1319-30-544-054. The applicant's representative is R.O. Anderson of R.O. Anderson Engineering, and the owner is Peak Tahoe LLC and Lucille Ro.
Thank you, Chairman Rice, for the record, Lucille Reo, senior planner.
I'll never get it right.
I wasn't going to call you out for it. This project is located within the Tahoe Village subdivision, the subdivision dates back to the 1960s. In 1996, the 15th amended map for Tahoe Village included a change to this building, the request was to add units to the proposed structure. That same year, this project also received a special use permit, special use permit 9609 and variance 9604, approval for 48-unit timeshare condominium project and a variance to allow the height to exceed the maximum permitted height requirement of 35 feet to 42 feet. In 2006, a minor modification to the special use permit occurred, and it seems that is when the project went from timeshare units to residential units. In 2022, the project received reapproval of the special use permit and variance. In 2018, a building permit was pulled and has been extended to complete the building shell. Once the project has received approval of the amended map, they can apply for a building permit to complete the interior construction of the units. On April 9th, 2024, the Planning Commission voted 5 to, 5-1 with one absent to recommend approval of the request to the board, staff is also recommending approval of the request with the recommended conditions in the staff report. Findings can be found on packet page 1174, and the conditions of approval can be found beginning on packet page 1172. Today, we have Rob Anderson of Anderson Engineering with a presentation for you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, Rob Anderson, now on behalf of the new Peak Tahoe LLC. The, the ownership of the project just actually changed effective Monday, so it's the new Peak Tahoe LLC who I'm here on behalf of. The, as Ms. Reo, as first...
Reo?
Reo, I'm getting closer, it's only been like 15 years we've worked together, but the, but for some reason I struggle, I do not know why, but it seems so simple, but Ms. Reo had pointed out to you, this is an application for a merger and re-subdivision from 49 units to 43 units, and actually a reduction in those number of units. The building has been in place for many years, I think all parties are anxious to see it get completed, the approval of this map would be a significant step in that direction. I'm happy to present to you some floor plans that are too small to read on a screen, and discuss it at whatever length you would like to, I believe the map is in order and, and should be approved, the Planning Commission approved it, I believe unanimously, if I don't mistake, if I'm not mistaken. Pardon? 5-1.
I forget who voted, which...
1.
Oh.
Couldn't be 5-1.
5-1, can you push me forward?
4 or 1?
Sorry, it's going to mess up for you, sorry.
It was 5 to 1, 1 was gone, maybe 1 abstained, 1 was gone, that's why it was on 6.
Keep going. Yeah, so these, these are the floor plans, the new 43-unit layout, again, they're just inside units, all inside the existing building. On that one in the bottom, it says garage floor, there's three units on the lowest floor, that's different than it was before, and then essentially the architect for the owner has changed the, the configuration of the units on the upper floors to accommodate, you know, what they perceive to be the market and the demand for units now, and so that is what has precipitated this change. There are, within those units, there are some exclusive common area facilities, including some of the decks that exchange out, so those, while they are in the common area, they're for exclusive use of the unit. exclusive use of the units. The, so as it points out there on the map, it's limited common area and limited to the use of that particular unit. Continue if you would. This is how it's configured and been configured now for over a year. They tarped it up about a year, fifteen months ago, in anticipation of the winter, and they were, had hoped to continue and work through it and complete the project, but for financing reasons, it did not go forward. And as of, again, Monday, the ownership has changed, and they now have funding again to finish up the project. So that is it. All the TRP has approved it, Tahoe, excuse me, yeah, Kingsbury General Improvement District has approved the plans, the homeowners association have approved the plans. It does include constructing a new clubhouse, a new swimming pool for the homeowners association, so each of those elements are included within the pending building permit drawings, or drawings that are pending as building permits with Douglas County. I hope that helps you. Again, happy to answer any questions you like.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, I thought Mr. Noah said was going, I was going to let him go first. Okay, so, and perhaps I didn't see it in here, this project, I mean, it's been on the books for a long time, and, and, you know, previous to the shrouding of it was just a concrete edifice, and a lot of people have asked, you know, what the heck is that going to be? And I didn't have an answer. But anyways, I know, apparently was a previously approved as a timeshare building, is that, but I don't see anything in the, in the plans, and maybe I'm missing it. So the timeshare process has been taken off, and then it's going to be sold, the individual units are going to be sold as condos versus an overall timeshare. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Gardner.
Okay.
And so, again, it is, the interest in the property, inside that building, has been previously subdivided, approved, there is a recorded final subdivision map that shows each of the units as they were originally envisioned. The timeshare portion of the project went away. These would be individual ownership. If they had a desire, I presume, in the future to either do fractionals or timeshares, I expect we would come back to you for a subsequent application, but that is not what is being requested at this time.
And I hate to bring this up.
That's okay, go ahead.
I hate to enter into the term VHR, but VHRs are allowed in this area, as I understand it, up to forty percent, up to forty percent. So I would imagine there may be a number of buyers that will eventually look at vacation home rental permits for this area. But anyways, I am kind of glad, once again, this is another project that's been on the books for a long time, and it's nice to finally see something come to fruition, and I believe the residents up there are anxious for it, to see it be built out, okay, rather than just a concrete edifice up there, so.
I believe you're right.
Mr. Anderson, I'm very excited about this project. It's funny, because when I first got on the board, I was taken up there, I believe by the owner or representative of the owner, and I said, first of all, what an ugly sight to be built like that. But then, when we was talking about the different things, and he showed me the renderings, what they wanted to do, I said, well, there may not be a better view in the western United States than you would have from up there, both the valley and the lake. It's really amazing and great. The pool was lacking in the, the pool was lacking, they have out there in the place, but it's so good to see this project move forward. It's hard with the funding to think somebody would put that kind of money into it, but it's great. So I think that's wonderful. And, well, really quick, I'm just going to finish up, piggybacking on Commissioner Gardner's statement, this is where VHRs would be very beneficial, it's next to the ski resort, the tourist corridor, and furthermore, it has great parking, a lot of parking there, and even underground parking. It really should be exactly what people want, that they want to come here and rent on a daily basis.
Thank you for your remarks.
And the county manager would like to weigh in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for the record. Just for clarification for the board, I'm sure you're tracking this, but I do want to clarify that this particular property is located just outside of the Tahoe township. We do not allow VHRs outside of the Tahoe township, and so we really shouldn't be discussing VHRs in relation to this project, period, but I just want to make sure that the board is aware that this project is not located within the Tahoe township. Tom's shaking his head no, but I might, I thought it was on the other side of the boundary, Tom.
I mean, I'll try to deal with it.
Okay.
So it's actually a very unique site. As Ms. Davidson points out, a portion of the property is outside the Tahoe township, and a portion is in. And in fact, as we started in design, in conversation with the planner at TRPA, she informed us that in fact, TRPA had moved the line, which I'd never heard of before in my forty years of experience, where they moved the boundary line actually closer to the building, but the building itself is located in the Sierra district, so it is outside, the building itself is outside, the site is both within and without the Tahoe Basin. So I don't know what that does to VHRs. So I surrender at that point.
That's a very definite maybe.
So yesterday in our meeting, which I think Tom's going to clarify right now, he discussed and talked about putting the VHRs there, so that's where my understanding came from.
Yeah, thank you. Now, it's a big muddy mess. Tom Delair, Community Development Director, for the record. So the Tahoe township actually extends down into the Sierra, the Sierra Community Plan by a section and a half, I want to say, it's about a section and a half down the hill. So that's, that's the Tahoe township. That's for the East Fork, it's for the judge, the district, right, for the, for the judges. And so the Tahoe township is where the VHRs are allowed. It is on the Douglas County side, this township, yeah. It's a TRPA regional planning area, which is supposed to be the ridge line of the Sierras, but I think GIS has three, maybe now four, versions of where the ridge has apparently changed over the years. But the ridge is the ridge, this side, the site facing the lake, the pool, I think, and the clubhouse will be in the TRPA regional planning area, but the structure itself, any water on that ends up coming down and will eventually drain into the Carson River. So hopefully that clarifies it. So VHRs are allowed, yeah.
Yeah, that's first of all.
Right, right. Maybe next time we'll bring a map.
I'm glad we cleared that.
You should have just got up and said, yes, it does, and left it at that.
Yeah, that bedroom is in vacation home rentals. That bedroom is not, okay.
So the, thank you, Tom, for that, that's very helpful, something I did not understand, the subtle distinction in your boundaries, but it is actually, a portion of the site is jurisdictional to TRPA. Kingsbury General Improvement District provides the water and service, sewer service, and also the Tahoe Douglas Fire District provides fire service to the site. So that's kind of the relationship between the various entities. Whether or not it fits within the VHR, I'm going to yield to my distinguished colleague and friend and say, I'm sure he knows, so, okay? Thank you.
I guess the final question is, where's the bar?
I suspect it's down the hill, just a little bit further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Hales, do you have any comments?
I'd really like to see this get finished and functioning, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Now, if we could do something about that one-way road.
Yeah.
All right, and if there's no further comments from the board, we will open this to public comment. Going once, going twice, I will now close public comment, bring it back to the board for a motion. Commissioner Hales, you haven't moved in on anything today.
Well, it's a little bit easier when you're there, but I'll, I'll, I'll give this a go. I move approval of land division application DP twenty-four dash zero 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 five as presented.
Do I hear, and Commissioner Noah said seconds? Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. All right, I appreciate it, thank you. I just hope we don't see it on seventeenth, change to the amendment.
All right, we will move on to item number nine for presentation only. Announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of, or a liaison to, or meeting functions they have attended, and any requests by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item, starting with Commissioner Hales.
I will save my report till I am there in person, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here doing things with my family out of state and still able to fill my responsibilities as a commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies for my she's-got-ants comment.
Anything to lighten it, it's, it's good.
Yeah, her answer spelled with a U, so that's okay. Okay, starting at the other end, Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Number one, last Friday, we had, of course, the, our monthly NACO meeting, and had Commissioner Amadee come and give us a report. That was very enlightening. On Monday, we also had the, there's a new subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce, Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Economic and Community Development Subcommittee, of which I am a member of, and that was always a very good discussion, and we're meeting on a monthly basis outside of the chamber board to do that, and so we have a lot of community participation in that. On Tuesday then, or on Wednesday, we had the Chamber of Commerce actual board meeting, and then, so I've attended all of that. And as I indicated earlier, the, on Monday is the start of the National Outdoor Recreation Conference at the Tahoe Blue Convention Center, and I've been invited by Denise Baroneo of the Nevada Outdoor Recreation Department to give some opening remarks, and so I'm looking forward to that. I'm going to spend an hour going up there for a five-minute delivery, and then, but anyways, I think it's always good that other tourist destination and outdoor recreation entities within our nation could come in and see such a beautiful event center and enjoy Lake Tahoe, and, and, and so I look forward to that, and I think it'll be eye-opening for the rest of our nation to see what we have available here. And, and so that's what I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarkinian, you pass.
I don't have it.
Commissioner Noah said.
Met with the Board of Health. Some scary stuff going on in their health ways, specifically, no, I won't even mention specifically, but it was a relatively short meeting and learned a lot from their, from the statistics.
And fortunately, or unfortunately, I was in the hospital, and I missed a, missed a meeting, the first, I believe the first meeting I've missed since I got elected, and the good news is I'm, I'm back, the bad news is I'm back. And with that, thank you for all the well wishes, and we will adjourn the meeting right after closing public comment.
Jason Gibson, Peace Your Culture campaign, to elect yours truly to District One, Gardena Ville Rancho's. Want to reflect upon the heritage, Genoa Heritage Days, exceptional production value. That was a lot of fun. That was my first time back in thirty-some-odd years, relocating from the Columbia River Basin, and have not seen that kind of representation since I was a kid. Excuse me, I'm talking. Want to make it clear that our oral historians that do the reenactment down there are doing that for free. They're doing it on their own, without support from the county. I was informed that this board and the county quashed the heritage history reenactment here that used to happen in Mindon. It's almost as if they don't want you to know your heritage. These folks put a lot of time and energy and effort in representing, sadly, First Nations people, the Wachishu, the Paiute, were not represented at the Nevada Heritage Horse Parade. They were completely devoid of the historic commemoration and celebration, and when we tried to direct the attention of the board to Earth Day and the purpose behind Earth Day, which is to redirect into the organic geography and history and culture of our Douglas County here, they shut me down for doing so. They would rather replace Earth Day with Autism Awareness Month, with Victim Crimes Awareness Week, and with emergency preparation gatherings as opposed to celebrating Earth Day and First Nations peoples. The Thirteen Moon Calendar is the bible to First Nation peoples, which is why they stand opposed to it. The Thirteen Moon Calendar is the reference to the indigenous consciousness that preceded the colonization of this land. This land was referred to as Turtle Island for a reason, because there are thirteen scales to the turtles back and twenty-eight minor scales that circle the thirteen, therefore Turtle Island. They don't want you to know that, they don't want you to know about the thirteen stripes there, they don't want you to know about the thirteen on your great seal, the thirteen stars above the eagle, the thirteen branches in the eagle's claw, the thirteen arrows, or the thirteen levels to the temple of the law in the all-seeing eye of the pyramid. It says Norvo Ordo Seclorum, return to the natural order, the new world order, the organic Did you have a meaningful Beltine yesterday, folks, the Celtic holiday? Nobody?
And if there's no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned.